All three court attendants.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Grainey.
Here.
Fernandez. Leahy. Leahy. LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda is laid on the table. There's one through four is from the Gas Electric with regards to polls. Any? Request on that?
Take a motion to take off the table for a public hearing.
Do you want to package them all together or one at a time?
All together is fine, Mr. President.
Alright, so motion is to suspend the rules. Take one through four as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One is from the Gas Electric. Request permission to locate a line, wire, cable, pole, and fixtures in the alley next to 215 Essex Street. Two, same reading except for it's Walnut in Appleton Street. Three, same reading except for it's Linden in Appleton Street. And then four is the same request for Lyman Street and St. Kobe Drive. So with that, the motion is to take them up under discussion. Is there anyone here from the Gas Electric to discuss? Were they invited? Do we know, or?
Yep. And I know Jeffrey sent the link.
Just rolling through here.
If I may?
Yeah, Council, Jeffrey, yes.
So it was Vince O'Connell, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I did see him attempting to get in at the beginning and then he just dropped off.
Alright, so.
He's trying to get back in now.
So we should wait on these if they're trying to get in?
I could ask the president while we're waiting. I could ask a question, Mr. President.
Sure, Counselor.
How do your brothers notify?
Yes. So all the notices went out, all the notifications. Just appears that they're having trouble getting in or they were kicked out somehow by accident.
Yeah, hey, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, Counselor Leahy. Counselor Leahy is here. Seeing how there is some technical difficulty, I say that we just hold off on this to see if Vince tries to get back in.
Motion to leave it on the table, then.
Motion is to leave on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, item five. Who's that? Someone?
Uh, he's here.
He's here?
Yeah. Technical difficulties with my Zoom.
No, no, no worries. So make a motion to go back to one through four. All those in favor?
Aye.
So Vince, good evening. How are you?
Good. Sorry about that. Having some issues over here.
No, no worries. So we just read them into the record, the four requests for polls. Do you want to give us a little breakdown as to what's going on, please?
Sure. So we're doing some underground conversion work this year. We'll be replacing some existing underground facilities. And in doing that, we're also trying to get rid of some of our protective devices that are in the manholes and bring them to the surface side. In order to do that, we had to install several pieces of equipment. Pad mount equipment. And in addition to that, there is an area where we will need a new utility pole in order to refeed some customers over on SX. This is all in lieu of converting our low voltage primary from 5 KV to 15, making it safer, more reliable, and more efficient.
Any questions for? For the Gas Electric? Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just to retire, Chair, just on the timing of this, please?
So we're looking at starting this conversion project probably sometime in March or April timeframe?
Yeah, and winding it up when?
We're hoping to finish everything prior to November, October of this year.
And is this gonna disrupt anybody's service in that area?
Yes, sir. There will be, there will be possibly I don't know exactly how many outages because I'd have to go through exactly what customers would be affected and how long. But there definitely will be outages due to these changes to the system.
Okay, and the outages would last for what? Part of the day or for a period of time? Or how's that gonna work?
It's all gonna vary. I think that we've been going for about a four-hour outage max. From my experience this past year doing the same type of project.
And how do you notify the customers?
We have actually an interactive voice mail system. And if that doesn't work, we typically either do door hangers. And we'll go out to each customer's door. We'll set a door hanger and obviously we'll try to get ahold of the customer via telephone.
And the last question is, do we know how many customers are gonna be impacted?
Not at this time, only because I have to actually go through and do a more in-depth study on exactly where we can isolate what customers and minimize the outages as much as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Take a motion to close the public hearing and grant the petition?
Well, just a point of order. I mean, did you ask the public to speak yet or in favor against?
Go ahead.
I didn't hear the president. I just raised my hand. But if he did, he did.
No, first I did ask, is there anyone else to speak? No one else is speaking. Anyone from the public? Who has a comment, question with regards to these polls, one through four on the agenda? Just scrolling through again. I don't see any hands up. Looking at the screen, I don't see anyone raising their hand. So the motion from Counselor McGivern was to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion would be to grant the petitions for the polls.
Hold.
One through four. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all of them, one through four, except as a package.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the petitions for the polls.
You're gonna make a motion to take item five off the table?
Motion is to take item five off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, an order that the bonding for the 10 priority intersections and funding for the traffic light installations be reviewed in the Finance Committee?
Mr. President, if I could?
Yep.
This was a report that came out of the Finance Committee some time ago. We met on it and we had a discussion. And the order itself is looking for a report on the 10 intersections that were considered in need of funding for traffic light installation. And the Finance Committee agreed and we were under the understanding that the superintendent was going to get this report to us by the next meeting. When the next meeting came, Mike McManus gave us a call and said, you couldn't quite get it for that meeting and we tabled it for two weeks. What happened was the report came in from the superintendent. But it came in with a focus on Aframont Highway. And that was placed into, I defer to Counselor Bacon, but I think either Public Safety or Public or the Ordinance Committee itself. So I think the Finance Committee report is done that we did receive the information from the superintendent. And if everybody has that or has access to it, I think we're all set with this order.
Okay, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The reason I brought it up, I just got something yesterday from our city engineer, Bob Parent, which was related to an order that I had filed. That the very last sentence in his report was, and I'm gonna read it in case someone didn't get it. Note, replacement of all the traffic signals along this corridor. This was the High Street, Maple Street, Dwight Sergeant, Cabot, all those corridor is currently under design and Mass DOT's Transportation Improvements Plan for funding with construction beginning FY22. So I don't know how many of those are in the top 10 priority intersections, but I would venture that there's a few of those and maybe some of the other ones that we're talking about. So it looks to me like if we were to ask the city engineer to come in, we might get an update and FY22, you know, will be starting in July. So hopefully some of this stuff potentially could be getting done this summer. The only reason I brought it up because I just got this report yesterday and the very last sentence was talking about the traffic signals and estate funding and construction beginning in FY22.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue got a little bit confused because the bonding that was voted included the top 10 and the Aframont Highway Highway Light. But then when the bids went out, there was not adequate funding. And so my order was filed to see what the likelihood of these actually happening was.
Give it all.
And in particular, Aframont Highway. And my understanding is that if the design part can be completed, then Superintendent McManus thought that then the bonding might be adequate to actually complete the project. So I believe that is the status at this time. Thank you.
Alright, Counselor Bacon, because it's your order. Are you satisfied with the information? Do you want more information, I guess would be my question, based on your order? What would you like?
Well, I'm alright with it for now and I'll follow up with another order if it needs to happen. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McGivern?
Just a quick follow-up. I thank Counselor Bacon and Counselor Murphy. Again, I think the order's been complied with. Counselor Murphy points out something that did just come in and it may overlaps with these 10 intersections. But that's important to understand that we've known about the downtown project for many years now. And just a reminder, when the state does things, they do it in phases. And the design phase is what they call it. And we're getting closer to the final phase. And part of what I read in the City Engineers Report is they're talking about roundabouts somewhere. And I think we, on a separate order, on a separate initiative, we do need to get the city engineer in on that to see where the state is proposing that, just to make sure we're okay with it. But as far as this order goes with, I would suggest that it's been complied with and that we adopt the committee report.
Second.
Counselor Murphy, you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanna look regarding the roundabouts. His report was an order that I had filed to see what the possibility of roundabouts were primarily from an environmental health perspective. A lot of research indicates that roundabouts improve air quality and the areas that I had asked for were on Maple and High. I had also looked at Main Street because those are the areas where we have the greatest breathing issues in the city. And, but his report was very clear that because of the density with buildings on the corners, us to be able to put roundabouts there were not something that was feasible in any of those areas. But that also is that, you know, that's when he answered, and he did indicate that and it makes, sounds like to me like the state's planning on funding most of these projects or most of these traffic signals, at least on High Street and Maple Street for FY22. But if Counselor Bacon is okay and she wants to file another order, I'd like to file an order just to be, have the engineer come in and talk about all the various ones that we're getting potential state funding for, which might include Aframont Highway. I don't know.
Okay. So seeing no other hands, motion is that it's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Jeffrey?
Don't see any hands up and nobody has specifically said they're here for public comment.
Alright, so if anyone's online and you're looking to do public comment, please raise the the hand feature or I'm looking at the screen, looking to see if anyone's looking to raise their hand here.
Can you just, as the Chair, walk people through how to find that blue hand going to participants?
Yep, so if you're on the main screen, the way I see it, it can be different depending on how it's set up for you. A pop-up will jump up. It'll say mute, stop video to show that you're not on video. It'll then say participants and the total number of people. Currently I have 25. If you click that, it comes up on my right-hand side. There'll be an option down at the bottom. It says invite, mute me, or raise hand. If you hit raise hand, then that would show that you're looking to do public comment.
And if I may?
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, so you're right, President McGee. Depending on the device you're using to view the Zoom meeting or to join the Zoom meeting, every single device is different. Even this new laptop that I got is completely different. It didn't take me long to get used to it, but everybody's, it's gonna be a little bit different. So it's just a matter of trying to figure it out and shouldn't be too hard. Just click on everything.
I just wanna point out Counselor Anderson Burgos is still rubbing it in our faces that he got a brand-new laptop. Just saying, just saying, yeah. Alright, I'm not seeing anyone. With that, we'll move on to communications. Item six is a communication from the mayor. Subject to approval here by appoint, the following individual is service member of the Library Board of Directors. Dr. Stefan Markat, ED at 20 East Hampton Road. He will replace Rachel Garber, which will serve a three-year term, which will expire February 2024. So public service. Those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven is from the city clerk and our administrative assistant. It's the minutes from December 1st and 15th and January 5th City Council meeting. I do believe there was one amendment to it. Was that the January 5th meeting? I'll defer to the city clerk. You're on mute. Which one was it where we had a typo? January 5th. It says that President Anderson Burgos calls the meeting to order. If you want to be president, it's all yours, sir. But no, it's just it'd be President McGee and that's the only typo that was recognized.
Make the motion to receive.
Motion is to receive.
Amendment.
Fixing that typo.
Can I make a motion to amend December 15th? And nothing against Counselor Sullivan, but he was listed as a committee member on public safety. And while I would welcome you to the committee, since you're not there, I don't think we should be giving you extra credit. So I'd like to make.
And for December 15th, for public safety, it lists Counselor Sullivan as a member and it would be in attendance fixing that mistake as well.
Okay.
Hearing or seeing no one else, motion is to receive. All those minutes. I was in favor?
Aye.
Eight is from the Hoyle Healing Community Study to install the Narcalock box in public areas across the city.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to take up item 14E to go along with item eight.
Second.
So put eight there and that was 14E. Give me a second to find it. Alright, so motion is to suspend the rules to take up 14E as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the point was 14E is to command public safety was referred in order that the Public Safety Committee invite in Ms. Harris from the Boston Medical Healing Community Study Coalition in order to discuss the boxes and the opioid overdoses. That's been complied with. So Counselor Murphy, you're taking up eight and 14E as a package. Over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So first of all, we had a very good meeting and I want to thank you for filing the order. It was a very informative order and I think highlights the needs that we have to try to protect people and make sure that we have a chance to save lives. So the order was complied with and the committee does recommend that the city work cooperatively to install Narcalock boxes in as many locations as possible. Any of those locations have to be in an indoor environment because the temperature needs to be, I think it's 59 degrees up to some other, I think it was 78 or something. They are, the site selection would be determined by input from police, fire, and ambulance services with data regarding overdose cases. There would be literature with the, with the box explaining how to use it. There's literature there to highlight the importance, even if you are administering it, to make sure that immediately you are calling 911 so that you have ambulance emergency response coming to the spot. And all of that would be posted on all the boxes. The Healing Community Study Coalition and their allies will work to make sure that the proper supply levels are maintained at each location. There is no danger of someone using this and getting sick or getting high or any of those things. The temperature has to be 59 degrees to 86 degrees. You know, they're gonna check daily to see if the Narcan and/or supplies needs to be refilled. They do expect that Narcan may be taken from a Narcalock box for personal use and they'll refill them if that happens. And they're, you know, they do explain everything and obviously just from an aspect of saving lives, making sure that people that do overdose, if somebody can be there with the Narcan to be able to take care of them. It was a very good meeting. Again, the ambulance people were there supporting this. The police opioid task force was there supporting this. The ambulance did indicate in the importance of calling 911. So I want to emphasize that because a lot of people think they give it and they're all set, but they're not. And they could end up, if Narcam wears off, they want to make sure they get that person to a care facility where they can observe them and make sure that they're gonna be okay. So I mean, I think the order was very, the order, the meeting was very good. It was very informative. We had a number of people that came and participated. And again, I thank you for filing the order, Counselor McGee. I thought it was a very informative and I want to thank the the Coalition, the Healing Community Study Coalition for reaching out to you. I mean, if something that we can do and save somebody's life, then we gotta do it.
Anyone further? Just looking, seeing nothing. I'll just say briefly, I want to thank Counselor Murphy for running a great meeting as always. And for all those who were involved, I know Counselor Anderson Burgos spoke very well and actually showed his bag of the Narcan, if I'm saying it right, Narcalock. And the real issue is one stat that really stood out from this whole meeting was by installing these and having these around. The projection is reducing opioid overdose deaths by as much as 40%. By as much as 40%. That's just a staggering number. So everyone that was involved in making sure that this came to fruition, I thank you and let's hope that it really does help us out in the long term. So with that, it's that it's been complied with. That's 14E and eight would be the to receive the information. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to nine is the Fire Commission minutes for November 19th, 2020.
Received.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 10 is from a minute. So this is the Whiting Street Resourcings Study Committee for December 17th, 2020, January 5th, 2021. This is their minutes.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Counselor Grainey first.
I don't have a copy of those minutes. Could I receive them, please, in the mail or somehow?
Yeah, I'll get, so you don't have nine and 10?
10.
10, okay, 10. We'll get you those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I just want to send a copy to DGR, please.
Copy to?
Bacon.
And that's of 10, right, Counselor?
Yeah, that's 10, correct.
Okay, so copy to DGNR and please send a copy to Counselor Grainey. I'll make sure that happens. So right now it's to receive and a copy to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 11 is a petition from EMB for Marijuana Manufacturing Establishment.
Ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? President's report. Think, I don't have anything new. Actually, no, I did receive one email today from, and for for those who have been getting the calls as long as I have. The mayor reached out to, I think, everyone. It got it with regards to Dean, the high school. There was debate of using it as a temporary homeless shelter. That has been withdrawn or it's no longer something that they're looking to do. So for those who have reached out to us, I know I emailed some of the people back today. That is no longer going to happen. That's the only communication I do have with regards to Dean. Anyone else with regards to things coming up? Counselor Murphy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just since obviously when the order comes up, we'll just let it go. But I just think it's important that two things. Number one, process plays a role. And this was a process that was rushed with the poorest communication. And, you know, I started getting calls after we had the public safety meeting where we were kind of informed that this was happening and everybody was all set. And I started getting calls saying, well, there are kids still using that gym during the school day. There are school committee people that have no idea that this is going on. That administrators at Dean and teachers at Dean had no idea that this was being planned. I mean, it we are all, and I don't think there's anybody here that's against trying to provide shelter for those people that need it. But we need to make sure that we do it in an intelligent cooperative manner. And that was not the case here. And I also want to, and you know, having worked at Hoyle Community College for a lot of years, Hoyle Community College was one of the sites that was considered. And the Bartley Center, which I go by when I take my couple of walks a week. I've been told that they couldn't do it there because of danger, because of construction. Well, I keep going by there. I don't see any construction going on. And that would have been an ideal place and we would not be retracting this had the college gone on with it. There was nobody there. They haven't used the gym. I'm gonna say since last March or April. It's got, it's a much bigger location than, with good parking, it would not be joined to anything else. So if we end up in a situation, I would hope if we have to do something now for this winter, that we would look at going back to the college. And I would hope the college would be more receptive to having somebody in the Bartley Center, which again, right now is not being used, which is where the testing center site was for a long time. And again, I just, if they were using it, I would not say that either, but that was a perfect location in terms of showers and everything else. So but again, the communication has to be improved and we have to know what's going on before decisions are made. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes, hi. Thank you, President McGee, and for the opportunity. I just wanted to add to this that I also did learn that the need for the homeless, it wasn't as quiet as high as they thought. And this is why they diverted back to not to have the homeless shelter take place. As well as in the letter that I read, it also states that they're looking As well as in the letter that I read, it also states that they're looking in the future to select a permanent homeless shelter here in Hollyoke and they're looking to form a committee. And I mean, this is great news as well. I know that this couldn't take off at this moment, but the city is looking in the future to elect a homeless permanent place. Because in the future, they might be more evictions happening. Once the, you know, the evictions take place and the courts open up and people are behind on their rents, I'm sure that the need is going to be greater. So I'm looking forward to being probably part of this committee or being a participant, active to try to select and identify a, a place in the future for it. Thank you.
Counselor, did we lose you or?
No, she said, she said thank you.
Okay, it kind of broke up on my end. Counselor Bartley, your hands up?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you wanted to take up twenty-seven out of order since we already had the discussion and I just wanted to make a comment. So I'm just going to make a motion to suspend. Take twenty-seven out of order, please.
One second. Motion is to suspend the rules and go to item twenty-seven. All those in favor? Order from Counselor Murphy, order that the city council go on the record in support of the school committee objecting to the creation of a homeless shelter at Dean School Gymnasium. It has come to my attention that students still use the gym during school hours and that the school committee and others have not been involved in discussing the impact of this move on students and staff at Dean. While supporting a shelter, the belief is that this is not the right location to do so. Counselor Bartley?
Well, can I just defer to Counselor Murphy for the committee report? Then I'll make my comments after that.
Mister President? Murphy, Counselor Murphy? I think what Counselor Murphy said earlier was that this would be applied with?
Yeah, but I also, I also, and I meant to say this before, that Counselor Bartley, I was going to co-sign, man, I I, I, I did find, I did, I just co-fired, it just, it just got lost on shuffle. So I'm co-signing. I'll, I'll add my name to it right now, Terry. It's just as good as anything. But again, I was, my, my comments were the ones I just made. I just think it's been complied with. It just So I'll second that. It was so poorly planned and, and there was no, no knowledge by people making the decision that students were still using it, not to mention the potential security issues.
Okay, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, and then just through, through the chair to the clerk, did, did the mayor send that as a late file communication, Madam Clerk?
Nope, I didn't get it.
Can, can I add that as a late file communication now? I'll send it to Jeff. Or Jeff, through, through, through the chair to Jeff, the administrative assistant. Could you just add that as a late file? I'll put in my name as a late filed.
If you could send it to my email, that would be helpful too and maybe
I'll send it to both Brenna.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
As soon as I'm done with this little thing, yeah. Thank you, as always. So Mister President, just a couple of small points. One, through the chair to my friend Terry Murphy. I, I think the Bartley Center is not really being used because it's under, under repair. It's been under construction. It's had roof, roof issue, roof leak issues. You know, who, who, who puts a flat roof in New England? Well, the Commonwealth does. So there you go. And that's, that's why the thing's been leaking since for, for a long time. So that's, that's why the gym's closed among other things. I, I, and I, obviously I can't speak for anybody up there, but I would I would guess that the college is generally pretty receptive to helping out the, the public and these things. So I just want to make that small, small little point. The, the, the other, the other point, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, a, anything here in particular. Except this, the, it, it why this continues to happen is beyond my recognition because we've all been through this before. I, I think everybody in this council, that there is no way that anybody can have an agreement, Mister President, for a public building, whether it's a license, remember we took care of that a few years ago. We had to go through that nonsense with Attorney Cunha. A lease, a purchase or a sale, you need to have prior authorization from the city council. Regardless of whether it's, it's whatever the public building is. So if it's Dean Tech Gym, the receiver and the mayor can't just say, hey, welcome. Does, it doesn't work that way, Mister President. So, I, I, when, when we get to the order about the receiver in a minute, I, I will reiterate that. And I'll reiterate that when he comes before the committee next month. But these things are just, I mean, that, that's how you keep regular order in, in my humble opinion. And by, by emphasizing to, and I did emphasize this to Attorney Barnes while this was sort of ongoing and she did recognize it and, and so I, I appreciate her consideration of my point on that. It's now a moot point, Mister President, because, because of this, this last second turnaround. I, I, I can't, I, I want to emphasize what, what Counselor Murphy said about communication, but you know, wherever you heard that lately, that, that is par for the course. With, with many, many things going on. So, so that being said, I, I'm glad to sign it. I signed on to this order. It just got lost in the shuffle. When we were printing the agenda, who cares? So, but it was, it was a great order. The one, one last thing, Mister President, I do apologize. Through the, through the chair to, to the chairman of the committee. I, I did not get a communication from the school committee. And I'm just wondering if the, if the chair could just briefly elaborate on that, whether it was a, whether it was a communication or a vote? Because I certainly did not hear the receiver talk about that during, during your committee hearing. And I'm just wondering how, how you how you came about that, that information. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, thank you. And it's a great question because I, I got three calls from school committee members. I believe starting Tuesday morning. And each of them indicated, first of all, that until their meeting Monday night, they had no knowledge of this. They had no knowledge of any of the issues. And they asked, they asked me, you know, would you file something to, you know, give us support because we don't think this is the right thing. We have students going to school at Dean right now. And the plan as, on February ninth is that they're going to have more students potentially going to which would mean, you know, we're in a situation. So they did not take a formal vote, Counselor Bartley, but they, three reached out to me on behalf, the vice chair, the former vice chair and, and the word three council all reached out to me asking me to represent for, to file something to represent and support the school committee, knowing that the first knowledge of this came at a public safety committee meeting. And as I told them at, at the public safety committee, we were kind of given the idea that this whole thing was, everybody was on board. So it was, you know, starting that Monday and Tuesday, the everybody on board dramatically changed. Okay, so, so now you know that you, we, we at city council, we never had a vote on that. So you, you know that couldn't have happened now, Terry. So all right, thank you. I appreciate that, Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister President. We, we never did vote on it. We actually tabled it.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep. Thank you. In addition, you know, to the, the council not having a vote or a, a, a opportunity to weigh in on this. What, what I found disturbing about this also is that for well over six months, eight months now, we've had a COVID crisis management team in place with salaries in the forty, fifty and sixty thousand dollar range. And this was not thought of at all until January, when it was already cold and really too late to do anything. That, I, I, I just don't understand with that many people in place, that, that many eyes on the situation, hands on the situation, how this becomes such a problem in January and is not thought about in September, August, November, okay? That it becomes an instant something we had to do and run through in January when it was already freezing out. That's it.
Counselor Leahy?
Uh, yes, first let me just take a moment just to think about all the people that are homeless and also all the people that unfortunately
Not coming through, Todd.
Counselor Leahy, can, can you check the microphone? It's, it's kind of breaking up.
Can't hear me?
Right there, you can, yeah.
All right. First of all, I just wanted to say God bless the homeless people. Terrible and I know the deal and what's what's the lift this COVID for, for evictions and it's going to be worse. However, I do like to share the same concerns with all the other councils as well. I only found out about this when a school committee member texted me during their meeting on asking if we could listen to the public service subcommittee. And I said, no, we hadn't. It was actually the public, that's public service, public safety. I hadn't heard about it until, until him. Then I get a phone call from administrator at the school. He only found out about it because he was asking if the maintenance person, who these two gentlemen are in a work block from the school. Pointed up, told them who they were, who they're representing. And that's when he found out that people are staying in the gymnasium that the school uses currently. And there's only going to be more students hopefully back in the school. This was poorly planned out. Moreover, the fact that the city council was left out of it is just a shame. It's happened in the past and it shouldn't happen.
So with that, anyone for, Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I, I, I wonder if the, the chair of public, I was at the meeting, but I don't recall. How did this order come to fruition? I mean, how did it arise to use Dean Volk? Where did that come from? I, I, Dean Technical High School. I don't, I don't recall how it, how it came about. What was the origins of it?
Can I answer that? Yeah, Counselor Murphy? So I, I filed an order because back in November, at, at a public safety meeting, we were told that the city was looking at potentially having the war memorial as an emergency shelter. And my order was to get an update on the status of the war memorial as an emergency shelter. And that's when they were telling us, well, we're not doing the war memorial. They, they also looked at the senior center and the Bartley Center and they decided that Dean, Dean Tech Gym was the place to go. Again, we tabled it because we didn't have enough information to do anything other than, I, I think, I know I was kind of like, whoa. And then obviously the next week it became even more of a whoa. But so it, it was just an order that I filed. If I hadn't filed that, I don't think we would have found out either.
Uh, through the chair, please?
Yep, Counselor?
Yeah, Counselor Murphy, who was they? Who were the they that precipitated this?
That was the mayor, mayor candidate meeting and, and Sean Goncalves. Well, it, back in November, it was Sean Goncalves, the health director, who did indicate we were looking at potentially having a homeless shelter at the war memorial. But it was the mayor and Sean that came to the meeting and talked about that they were now looking at Dean.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Lisi?
Um, thank you. I wanted to just note that I think that Counselor Murphy has it correct that the the state approached the city at some point in November, asking if we could get things ready for January with a shelter situation because they were anticipating a high number of evictions happening following the moratorium on rent deferrals. And, yeah, so I think that just sort of exasperates sort of the situation here where for three months or so there were conversations, there was movement, plans were made, things were signed off on. And the city council was never involved in the discussion. Not only for the formal sort of, you know, authorization to use the public buildings, but also just in terms of, you know, transparency and keeping the public apprised of what was going on and you know, if there was a selection of three buildings or among three buildings, you know, it seems like that, that's exactly why we would want to have you know, authorization from the council and some order files so that there could be a, a conversation, a public discussion and an opportunity for, for public input. So whatever work was invested in that project for the past three months. I, I even think that I understood that, that new floors were being placed in the Dean Gymnasium. You know, so clearly time, money, resources have been invested in this project and now it's being pulled, which is you know, sort of like doubly wasteful, right? So, so we're actually losing the opportunity to provide a shelter for folks who may have the need. And we're also, you know, yeah, just, it's a poor use of our, our resources in terms of the time, money, resources that had already been invested to sort of prop up and, and situate Dean as, as a shelter. So clearly lines of communication are, are severely severed. And, and we're not getting the, the information that we need either to the council, within city government or out to the public. And I'll just leave it at that.
Hold on a second. Did someone else say something? No. All right, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, just correct. Originally I was told that they, that they were going to play, pay for a new gym floor. That, that is not true. They were just putting something on there to protect the gym floor. So I, I was told that that was part of this agreement. But the other thing and, and that we has been that I brought up now is if they're in that situation and they were talking about Hoyoke families that were getting evicted. The money that they were going to spend to have them in there for two or three months could have basically covered more than two or three months of their rent. So again, you know, we need to get discussions where we can review it. Would they rather be in their home or would they rather be in the Dean Gym? And, and it appears that the money we would have been spending, they could have stayed in their apartments.
So with that, item twenty-seven is before us, adding Counselor Bartley's name to it. And it's that it's been complied with.
Mister President?
Yeah, Counselor Bartley?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just sent that late file in. So maybe Brenna decides it now. Maybe we just get rid of it.
All right, hold on, let me Give me a second.
And Mister President, can I ask a question? It's just in terms of procedure. Can we give an order complied with, without a recommendation from a committee? Can we just act on it on our, on our own that way?
Yeah, we, we can say that it's been complied with because we received information with regards to the order.
Okay.
That's all they're saying. You can, you know, you can say leave to withdraw, comply with because you got the information prior to it actually going to committee, which, which does happen. I do have an order in here for the MOU for, I think it's item twenty-one, asking for the MOU. That, that's just going to be leave to withdraw, comply with because we we don't need it anymore. I'm at, I have late file I is my last one. Will this be J or is there one missing anything else other than that? Brenna there that I missed?
Yeah, just put whatever the next letter is.
So this will be late file J. There's a motion to go out of order and take that one up as well.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? This would be the email from the mayor. Update on emergency shelter. Greetings, Counselor. I hope that this email finds safe and healthy. I'm emailing that you know that we have terminated plans to open a temporary emergency shelter at Dean. To have it successful, the state should have opened a shelter like this back in November when the state reached out asking that we make this work on a tight timeline. We did the best we could. As a result, a number of obstacles have emerged since then, despite the lack of emergency shelter. We have been assured that other supports and arrangements will be made for these families that would have been served by the shelter. Furthermore, given the eviction more term in place on the state and national level, we haven't seen the uptick in homelessness that was once predicted. However, we should expect this continues, this moratorium will eventually be lifted and families will be struggling. As for the future, Hoyok does not have a permanent emergency shelter. I will be convening a task force to start the planning of one. I'd like the council representative, if anyone is interested in being involved, we have a local and regional partner ready and willing to assist. And I'm preparing to leverage CDBG funds to make this happen. Thank you again for your feedback. Don't hesitate to contact me. If you have any questions or additional thoughts.
Motion, motion received and, and refer to public safety and copy to DGR, please.
Second.
Copy to the president so he can see if there's a volunteer to serve.
I think Libby offered just earlier.
The president makes the decision.
So hold on one second. So to public safety, copy to DGNR with regards to late file J. And then we'll point someone from the council after And then we'll, uh, point someone, uh, from the council, uh, after that. Uh, so with regards to late file J, is that correct? Did I miss anything?
You nailed it.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to twenty-seven, once again adding Counselor Bartley, and then that this has been complied with.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so we're on to reports of committees, which is twelve A. The committee on ordinance was referred in order that the permanent speed, uh, feedback sign, um, placed near three hundred Westfield Road to reduce speeding by drivers in this area. Uh, this is a potential and safety issue recommended that it be adopted. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you. Uh, so receive the committee report and adopt?
Motion is receive and adopt.
Uh, under discussion, I'll just note that, uh, we had, uh, numerous attempts to figure out how to reduce speeding in this area in ordinance committee previously. Um, and due to the traffic pattern and the speed issues, um, that are present, it's been very difficult to come up with a solution. And so, um, in some ways, uh, this is a last ditch effort that the, um, council is coming up with. All we can do at this point in time is say that we would like this permanent, uh, speed feedback sign in the area to help alert drivers to their speed and that they are going over the speed limit. Um, but it would need an appropriation. Um, and so, um, while we can say that we're adopting it, um, the money for the, uh, speed feedback sign would have to be appropriated by, uh, the mayor, um, or find, find funds found in the DPW budget. Uh, the maker of the order is Linda Bacon, so if, um, Counselor Bacon would like to add to that in any way, uh, I'll, I'll defer to her as well.
Counselor Bacon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll be happy, um, once the council, should the council support this, uh, to follow up with DPW to see what funding might become available. Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to receive, adopt the, uh, report about placing near three hundred, uh, Westfield Road to reduce speeding. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, twelve B, the committee on ordinance was referred in order that the posted speed limits for Main Street, sections sixty-eight to two twelve be replaced with the following. Main Street northbound, beginning, uh, Route five and Ingleside Street. And it goes on Main Street southbound with all the measurements, uh, recommended that it be adopted. Uh, motion is receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Uh, you know, since these are, um, changes to the traffic ordinance, I'm going to say, uh, that there be a motion to, um, pass the first reading.
Good.
Second.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I, I'm, I know I'm one of the old ones here, but I, I'm thinking that this has already been adopted.
It has, we dealt with this a very long time ago. You are correct, Counselor Murphy. We dealt with this, I believe, in like June or July. It just never, um, arrived on a full council agenda for a final vote to be taken. And there was a lot of chaos in the jacket that we cleaned up related to traffic orders. Um, so when we checked with the engineer, um, it seemed that what we could find was that we, we passed this out of committee, June, July, but it never had a final vote with the council.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I have a, a note attached to it. Uh, it should be noted that this passed out of ordinance on June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, but after finding in the jacket, there was no record in the agendas or minutes of it being taken up by the council. Counselor McGivern?
I just like to note that, you know, some signs were changed, especially around Dean. Some speed limits were changed and just let everybody know if anybody got a speeding ticket, they can now contest it.
Oh, boy. All right, so back to Counselor Lisi. Motion is to receive, adopt, and you said pass the first reading?
Yes, please.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for these changes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait, your vote, you're approved, the changes. Twelve C, committee on ordinance was referred in order that in an effort to enhance food access and security to our residents during uncertain times, that we expedite a backyard chicken ordinance as well as review the permitting process for community gardens to ensure that the facility is easy access to use such sites. Have considered the same and recommended that, uh, the order be adopted with an amendment that the special permit fee be waived.
Yes, uh, so motion to receive and adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. So everybody should have had, uh, final language in front of them. And I'll just run through some of the highlights. And if there's questions, we can, um, work on some of those things through the discussion. Um, so what we passed in the ordinance committee is that up to six hens can be kept in the following residential zones. It's R one, R one A, R two, and D are up to six unit dwellings. Um, hens must be kept in hen houses or coops that must provide a minimum of three square feet of space for each hen. Um, the coop must be enclosed by a run, uh, which is an enclosed outdoor area that provides a minimum of ten square feet of space per hen. Um, the coop and run setup must be eight feet from any side property line, ten feet from any rear line, and fifty feet from any neighboring dwelling, as well as one hundred feet away from any surface water source. Um, hens mu- must be kept in a safe and healthy manner as described by the Board of Health Regulations that outline the procedures for food storage, waste management, and cleaning and sanitizing the coops. Um, roosters are expressly prohibited. Renters who wish to keep hens must demonstrate in writing that they have permission from the property owner. Um, and this entire process is a special permit process of the city council, which includes a public hearing and notification of a butters within three hundred feet of the property in question, um, where the chick- chickens would be kept. Um, and then the thing that we amended from the previous time this came out of, um, uh, ordinance is that we had noted that this is a very expensive process. Um, it requires a one hundred dollar, um, special permit fee and advertising, which, um, thanks to, um, I believe it was Counselor Bartley, we found out does not have to be with, um, the largest or any particular, uh, you know, newspaper company. And so that can bring the cost down, um, nearly by half for the advertising piece. But there is another hundred dollar fee in terms of recording the special permit with the state. Um, so while we could bring down the advertising costs by half, it would still be, um, a three hundred dollar process. Uh, and so the committee most recently voted to amend, um, that we waive the special permit fee and, um, make it easier for our residents to, um, begin the process. Um, again, all the other pieces of the special permit process there, including advertising and butter notification, um, the authority of the city council as the permitting, um, authority is all there. Um, but to sort of ease the sort of, um, you know, cost to entry, because again, you could spend all that money and not be allowed to have the, the hens in the coop in the end. Um, we thought that what we had control over was a hundred dollar, uh, special permit fee. Um, it is unique. It would be the only special permit fee in the city that would be, um, waived. And so it does put a degree of burden on the clerk's office for when people take out the, uh, special permit to begin this process. Um, but at the end of the day, um, the committee, um, by a three to two vote, felt that that was something, again, that we had control over and that we could, um, do to ease the, um, the financial burden on our residents. Um, I think those are all the details. Uh, I'll, I'll open it up to questions if people have any questions at this point.
Anyone with questions or? Counselor Murphy, use your hand up or no?
Yeah, but it's not for questions, I don't.
Okay, for our comment, either or.
Okay. Okay, uh, at the committee, I did not vote to, uh, waive the fee because I thought we had done a good job finding out how we could reduce it. And I also make the suggestion way back, uh, that in terms of trying to make sure, uh, we have, uh, good neighborhood results, if you will. Uh, part of that process before you ever file would be to talk to your neighbors and, and see how they feel. Uh, but then I did some more research and again, I'm, I may be wrong, but, uh, city ordinance nine point three point six on fees reads as follows. The special permit granting authority may adopt reasonable administrative fees and technical review fees for applications for special permits. The fee for a special permit before the city council shall be one hundred dollars unless a greater amount is required elsewhere in the ordinance. I, the, that particular ordinance does not allow us to waive. It allows us to raise it, but not to lower it. I know, so we would end up having, if we wanted to do that, we need to change that part of nine, nine three six.
Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I would just ask the, the legal counsel to offer some clarification there. Uh, I agree, I agree with what I hear you saying. I just want to, um, have it verified.
So there's a question for legal motion, would to spend the rule, allow Crystal to answer questions?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Crystal?
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I think I expressed my concern with the same issue when we first started talking about this, that, you know, keeping all permits, that standard fee and putting it all towards that ordinance makes the most sense. That way, when you change permit fees, all the permit fees change at the same time. Um, it would not be the first contradiction in the ordinances. Certainly probably won't be the last. I think if you definitely want to waive it, we could put in some verbiage in this ordinance that section nine three doesn't apply. I think it would get to around that contradiction. It's, uh, not necessarily an end all be all that you have to comply every time with nine three, but I think it makes the most sense. I think singling out one permit makes it confusing. Um, having people constantly have to look to separate ordinances where there's one distinct spot where permit fees are, just, it makes more sense.
Thank you, Crystal.
Counselor Bacon was next?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my comment is that as I looked at the legal form, while the summary that the chair has given tonight is in agreement with the notes and the votes that I have, the legal form that is before us tonight does not contain the same information on a number of areas. The zones, the notice, a butters distance, et cetera. And I don't know if there's more. Those are just a couple that I saw. So I think we need to be sure the legal form is in agreement with the committee. And, um, as one of the minority, my position would be if we're going to change permit fees for one matter, we should consider looking at them for all. Thank you.
Counselor, so, Counselor Bacon, with regards to your question, did you want Crystal to answer it with regards to the legal form?
Well, I, sure, I just think it needs to be brought into agreement with the votes of the committee and the language doesn't match from what I'm seeing, unless there's another document I didn't see.
Cr- Crystal?
Yeah, I mean, I thought I made the edits that we wanted to make. If there's others, I don't know that they're all getting to me at that point then. Um, the zone language is separate. There should be a separate order for the zone. And I think it was, um, up to six units. But the zoning language has never changed. I don't think we edited that language. The only thing we edited was the ordinance itself. So if I'm missing something, then the edits aren't getting to me correctly.
So, Mr. President?
Yep, Counselor.
So the language that I saw included all of the residential zones, which is what had originally come to committee, which the committee amended.
The language that is submitted for final does not include all the residential zones because then they changed it to, uh, the six unit edit.
Right, and I understand that, but there were a lot of attachments. And that's why I was asking if there was another one because in the one that addresses the zones, it still had all of the residential zones listed, the one that I saw. There are many documents in that, in this folder.
Um, maybe there's an old one. That zoning language might be old.
Okay. So the three hundred feet and the zones that were reported by the chair in the final version?
I need to pull up the correct version.
And I think it would be helpful for us tonight if that could be put on top because there's a lot of documents sitting in there. Or somehow pulled out.
I, I agree, especially when we make a number of revisions and we have the multiple versions available. It, it will help to be able to understand which one we're looking at. Um.
Well, Crystal's looking at that. Counselor Bacon, do you have any other questions or just that last bit?
That's all for now, thank you.
So Counselor Hernandez is next, and we'll have Crystal kind of look for that stuff. But we'll just keep the agenda moving here. So Counselor Hernandez?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add that I did, um, vote, of course, in favor of, um, waiving the fee to, uh, make this more feasible for, um, the many residents in the many different, um, income brackets that we have in the city. Most of the people being under eighty percent of the area median income, um, at least in my words and in the words. And, um, having the opportunity to do this after hearing, um, what our legal had to say, um, allows us, right, to be kind and be courteous to our, 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 the many residents in this community that are interested in having these chickens for, um, food sustainability and to bring fresh foods to their tables for their children, to teach our communities, our youth that's growing up, um, the labor and the different, you know, connection with the foods that we're gonna be, um, bringing to our tables. I think that's very important. And, um, by having this opportunity, um, to waive this fee, um, I think it sends a strong message that this body of government is interested in the health, in healthy communities and the health of our residents. So, um, this is why I voted in favor, and I hope that we can get through all of the different edits and that this, um, Honorable City Council can, um, do a great thing for our city. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I just want to, uh, th- thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you to the chair as well for, uh, just been a long process. But, uh, I, I just want to point out that I, um, i- if nothing at all comes out of this, w- we did get to the point where we, we no longer feel constrained to advertise in one forum. So that is gonna, in fact, gonna be a cost savings. I, I think, uh, while I filed it and I worked at it, I want to recognize the, a new administrative assistant who, who did a great job, uh, working with me to sort of, uh, figure out what, what the costs are. Um, th- this is something I, 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 I had thought about it. So when we talk about doing something tangible, you know, I, I, I hear us waving, you know, waving city fees, which, which I, I, I personally don't support in this instance because we're, we're picking and choosing. Um, there, there's a lot of indigent people that come before us, uh, m- Mr. President, looking for permits, whether it's to start a new business in wards four, one, two, three, whatever. Um, we don't waive their fees. And they're starting business, and when they start the business, they pay taxes. So, so we, we're, we're not waiving any of their fees, and we're not waiving their special permit fees. And yet we're picking and choosing a winner in, in this instance. And I, I don't think that's the right way to run, uh, run a government. Um, but the most tangible thing we did was we, we said right here and now that we no longer have to use that. Um, but the most tangible thing we did was we, we said right here and now that we no longer have to use that, that one newspaper. And I could say from my own law practice that when, when I don't have to use it, it saves my clients hundreds of dollars. And I think the, I'll just use the, uh, we're client, the, the clients that come before the, the clerk in the city of Holyoke. Um, now, now they've got up to four different newspapers from which to choose. And, and, and the clerk and whoever it is, or, or if it's our administrative assistant, they can help the applicant, she or he, um, get the, you know, still have the same effect and yet a fraction of the cost. And I, I think, I think that's gonna be a great, that, that's gonna be the long-term benefit for me going forward. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the chair as well.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. And, um, I agree with Counselor Bartley that we shouldn't pick and choose and when he, when it's referred to as, um, a business that we don't waive the fees for businesses. We're not talking about a business. We're talking about individuals in our city. They're not a business. They're just trying to be able to manage some hens in their backyard, comply with the city. And at the same time, um, we are extending this courtesy of trying to make this more feasible for them economically. Things are so rough. I mean, there's, people are trying to make ends meet to put food on the table. This is, a- and then the pandemic on top of it. I mean, this is an opportunity for this body to do something great to lower the fee. You're not eliminating all the fee and yes, um, some counselors worked on, in, in our administrative assistant and, and it's honorable that they worked on looking into newspapers and whatnot, but we can even further extend for people to keep more money in their pockets and be able to do this. This is the opportunity to do it and no, they're not businesses. So we're not picking and choosing. Thank you. I just wanted to make that difference, that there's not businesses, it's people. Thank you.
Anyone for, uh, Counselor Murphy, I see your hand up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I'm just reading, uh, what we've gotten sent to us and, and I've had a number of concerns. One was the butter being three hundred feet and not one hundred feet, but on the ordinance that I've got in front of me, it says one hundred feet. And I know, I know the chair has said it's three hundred feet. So I mean, that's, I, I think we, whatever we do, I think we need to make sure that the document we have in front of us is, is actually a final document. I also have another document in front of me that it still includes our twenty, our forty, our sixty. Uh, so that, that's another thing. We also have situations where the documents related to the board of health and, and the special permit with the city council are not of the same, they're not saying the same thing as well. So there's other changes there. I also have, and I would assume it'd be, uh, it says that renters must have a lease. And so I'm assuming if that's the case, that tenants that will cannot apply. So would that treat people differently depending on how they pay their rent? Uh, and, you know, I would assume that's primarily a downtown residence issue, but I, I, I wonder how many people are tenants that will? And, and would they be not allowed to do this? Or, or buildings that are tenants that will, would they not be allowed to do this? And then lastly, I just, uh, you know, we, we, we looked at chickabee and, and their, their sides were fifteen, their rear was, uh, fifteen from a sideline, fifteen from a rear line. And we, we compromise. I would just like to have, and I know I tried for ten feet, I'd like to see at least a compromise of ten feet from a sideline. Uh, I'm, I'm, that's like a, a width of a car plus a foot or two, uh, if, if we stay with the eight. So that's pretty close to someone else's, his property and, and I just would like to get as much space as possible. And again, I think it's much easier to put it in and if we find out it's too restrictive, it's much easier to change the restriction than it is to add a restriction. So, I mean, I, I think I would make a motion based on the fact that I know the document I have is not saying three hundred feet. I know it's still saying those other zones that we would, uh, either table it and ask for an updated document and/or send it back to committee to make sure we get a document that is three hundred feet and, and the zones are one, R one A, R two and downtown residential's six units or less, I believe. Uh, so that we're, we're doing the same things, uh, on, on all the documents, so.
Yeah, I, I would be open to that. I do want to say that the, um, the committee did vote to reduce the, um, there, sorry, there was one version where we reduced the butter notification to a hundred feet. Um, but we ran into the same issue because it, the state law stipulates that for a, um, special permit that three hundred foot butter notification is required. So, um, I will work with Crystal to make sure that everything, um, reflects the most recent, um, meetings that we've had. I didn't think that I would have to do that, but I, I will take it upon myself to do that work with Crystal and set a ti- set aside the time to, um, comb through the different versions that we have. Um, I apologize for any delay and confusion. Um, again, I was under the impression that all the, um, amendments were sorted out and there's nothing that anyone said that I disagree with in terms of what the committee has, um, discussed and voted on. Um, so I will, um, motion to table and we'll, we'll work on getting, uh, synchronous or synchronized, uh, versions out to everyone.
I, I know, but Counselor Leahy did have a question for the first time and some people have spoken to, two times. So Counselor Leahy?
You noticed that, huh? Excellent. Uh, yeah, so no, you know, talking about this, as we did, um, at the last meeting as well, you know, some of the research that I did was just talking about, you know, what are the pros and cons, you know, uh, you know, some of the cons are, you know, it's pricey. You know, people are saying it's not, it's not that expensive to have them, but, um, talking to people who do have them, it's if you're feeding them some decent food because you want to produce decent eggs, it could range anywhere from twenty-five to thirty dollars a month. Uh, secondly, the waste, if you don't stay in top of it, uh, it adds up fast and it, uh, there's an order with it. Uh, people also don't realize that, uh, hens do also make noise. Um, uh, they can make, uh, sometimes just as much noise as, um, um, a rooster does. Um, but there's also, uh, you know, lifespan. Uh, hens generally, you know, range from three, three to five years of producing. That's an important thing to keep in mind. And also there's a lot of, uh, pros to having, uh, hens. One is education, teaching your family, teaching your children how to be responsible and how to raise something. And there's also, um, kind of a cool, you know, cool thing that you're actually producing, you're helping produce, um, the organic food that you're eating. And I think that's a cool thing. Um, and they're also kind of a unique pet as well, kind of like a sassy personality, which I thought was, um, interesting as well. Um, however, as I said at the last meeting, and I'll say it again, um, you know, Tim Perrington tried doing this, uh, a long time ago. Tim Perrington, good man, my friend, and, uh, he had a, a different approach. He wanted to do a one-year pilot. He wanted to allow fifty licenses, revisit at the end of the one year, see how everything went, see what the neighbors, uh, had to say and, uh, allow this in community gardens where we can get the people that, uh, need it the most to have it. Um, and I think that's an important thing, you know, um, as Libby said, um, Counselor Hernandez said, you know, it's a pandemic. You know, and as I mentioned, talking about the homeless people earlier today, that there's only gonna be more homeless people, uh, more people that needing, um, food. Um, you know, and I would think that the, the community gardens is the ideal place for it. But as I said, I just noted the, the key points that Counselor Pergin brought up and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Bacon, I know you had stuff with legal, but.
Yes, um, I, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to committee so that we can review the legal in committee and bring it back to council if and when it's ready, please. Somebody will second it?
Second.
So the motion and was seconded?
Following the motion to table?
I didn't hear a second to that. There wasn't a second and that's why I want Counselor Leahy. Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Counselor Hernandez, one thing at a time. So.
Oh, no, I just wanted to tell you that, um, Crystal Barnes' hand is up.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna get to. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that everyone, we make sure we get every, everything correct here because there was legal questions and I know Crystal was looking it up, so I was giving her the time. Counselor Bacon did ask and it was seconded to go back to committee, but first let's go to, uh, Crystal because she did say she was looking stuff up for her. Crystal, or for us, actually.
So I've emailed the drafts that should be at least final of what I have, the zoning draft that you're all referring to, uh, I think what I, went out in that last email is an old draft, so you should have the new ones. I've emailed Jeff, um, the correct ones where it mentioned, we took out a bunch of the RM zones, the, um, higher end ones. And then it states that up to six units, so that should be heading into your drive. And then I think the only other edit that would be missing would be the hundred foot to the three hundred foot. Um, a butter's zone. I don't know that there should be anymore. Um, as you see in the draft that I sent around, there was a red line on purpose. And the section nine point, or nine dash three is left highlighted because that was all going to be changed in the legal form depending on what was voted on tonight. Um, it was sort of left up in the air whether or not we were going to add or take out the special permit fee. Um, but I don't know of any other amendments. Um, these were emailed to you all about a week ago and not one person mentioned edits to me about it until tonight. So when I send you drafts, if there's a discrepancy in what the committee had versus what I'm sending, I need to know. I don't get any edits generally, other than some scribbles on an ordinance sometimes. So, um, what I'm sending you is what I have for my notes and as you all know, this has gone back and forth. I think we're on draft five, six, seven of this. So whether it goes from a hundred to three hundred back to a hundred, um, that continues to change. And, you know, those edits sometimes don't make final draft. Um, I'm human, you know, and when these continue to do votes like that, where you reconsider and you go back and you make changes back to original versions, sometimes those get missed. That's why the drafts go to you. So that way you all can review them and get back to me. Um, this was mailed out in plenty of time for everyone to review and get those comments to me. Certainly don't reply all we've had that conversation, but you can send emails directly to me if you think that there's a discrepancy. I encourage that, that's what the drafts are for. Um, so I mean, going forward, I'd appreciate that if you all noticed the discrepancies early, these could have been amended and changed and you would have had a final draft tonight. Um, it sounds like there's a couple of words that were missing, so that would have been an easy fix. Um, if there's something wrong with board of health documents, Sean needs to know. I know that he sort of final drafted those and left it. So if something needs to be changed there, we need to let him know before the next ordinance meeting. Um, as to Counselor Murphy's question about the tenants needing a lease, if they're an at-will tenant, your owner more than likely would need to come in and apply for that. Um, or have a letter from the owner, some sort of certified letter would be my suggestion. We need to know that they're allowed to have these chickens on the land and that the owner isn't gonna show up one day to do maintenance on the house and now there's chickens in the backyard and they don't know anything about it. So I think to the board of health's credit, they want to make sure that if they're handing out a permit or if the city council does the permits, somebody needs to know that these tenants, whether they're at will or not, have permission to have these chickens there. So some sort of document needs to be in line, but my suggestion would be to have the owner apply if the tenants are at will. Um, but, because otherwise getting that certified letters can be a little difficult. I don't know if that covers anything, but, uh, if anybody has other questions, happy to answer those too.
Now, thank you very much, Crystal. That, I think that's what they were looking for. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, Crystal. I, I know, I don't know how you do it sometimes. Um, I, I just want to make a suggestion that we go back to the correct way of doing this stuff. We, we don't vote on drafts at the final vote for the full city council. And I understand what Crystal is saying, that, you know, you need everyone to see a draft. I went through every minute of the public hearings. I listened to what the committee said. There were multiple changes. But the legal form signed by the city solicitor is the only form we can vote on for a final vote. And if, if this was a draft coming out, and, and I think we, we have to, uh, go back to draft surf for committee only. And when it's ready, when the committee says it's ready, then it comes out to the full city council.
Right.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney?
I'm just gonna make a comment. I mean, the city is divided on this issue. It's another divisive issue. There's a lot of people who want hens. There's a lot of people who don't in residential areas. I think that, uh, you know, it has merit, both arguments have merit. And I think the only fair way to do this is to put it on the ballot again in the next election and let the citizens of Hoyok vote pro or con for this ordinance. Thank you. That, that would be the fairest way to do it. Thank you.
So currently, Ca- Counselor Bacon has, uh, motion, it was seconded to refer back to committee. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed?
No.
The I was to have it. Two twelve D, the committee on ordinance who's referred in order that the city adopt the mass recommended changes for the flood plan ordinance, recommended that the order be adopted.
Receive and adopt past the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor Lisi?
Thank you. Uh, we got advice through, um, Mima that there were some floodplain ordinance changes that we needed to make to bring our local ordinances, um, up to the standard that the state is presently, um, using. And so, um, Crystal went through our floodplain ordinances along with the, um, building commissioner and, uh, essentially, uh, reconciled the, the recommendations from Mima with, um, our floodplain ordinances that were already on the books and just, um, made some minor changes along the way. Um, there was no change to the map, so there were no, um, butter notifications involved in this public hearing. It was just, um, a hearing on the, the text changes. Um, and again, it's just to bring us into compliance with the, the state.
Counselor Bacon, your hand is up?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a leftover.
Oh, no worries. Uh, Counselor Bartley?
Yes, uh, I, I have to say, um, I actually, Mr. President, reviewed this whole thing on Friday. And I have to say it's very well-written and it's really pretty easy to understand. So I'm not sure if it was, uh, Mr. Cody or Mrs. Barnes or, or Ms. Barnes, Attorney Barnes, um, or the committee or whatever it was. I, I, I think it was a cut and paste from somewhere, but with a lot of input from the city of Holyoke. And, uh, other than I, I, I maybe I have one question and Crystal answered it right away. I, I, it, I, I think I was the one confused, not, not her. So I'm, I was very impressed by it and, uh, um, I, I have to, I, I just want to add that it's, it's, um, though it's a topic that's probably, uh, pretty mind-numbing for, for a lot of, for, uh, uh, you know, a lot of people watching this meeting. It, it's, I just want anybody who cares to, to know that, uh, you know, it was, it was well-done. So there, there, there's things in our ordinance book that maybe aren't as, aren't as, uh, easy to read and in such a topic that maybe, you know, floodplain stuff is, you know, we do live on the Connecticut River and it is important. So I, 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 I think that that ordinance should, should have come into effect, Mr. President, is gonna be probably a benefit for that narrow group of, uh, butters to the, to the Connecticut River that are really gonna really gonna have to rely on it. They're gonna have to rely on a clear, concise ordinance and I think that's what the committee passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bartley.
Thank you.
Anyone?
If I may, I'll just say, um, a lot of the text changes were from, um, you know, Mima and the state. But, um, really the hard work was done by, um, Building Commissioner Cody and Crystal to figure out where and how to line up what we had with, with the new changes that were coming, um, through. So while, while the text was there, the hard work was sort of, um, reconciling the two documents with one another. And so, um, I, I thank them as well for their work.
All right. See, nothing else. Motion was to pass the first reading, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass a second reading?
Second. Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendment. Still on mute.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tooman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Graney votes yes. I was on mute, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Unanimous vote.
Make your vote, your approved twelve C, uh, twelve D, sorry. Uh, before we go to finance, there was an, I, I did receive a, uh, an email asking for information. I guess there was another thing that was passed out of ordinance with regards to, I think it was the panhandlers and it wasn't on tonight's agenda. Uh, after following up with, with Jeff. Uh after following up with with Jeffrey, I believe there was a probably a mistake in what the procedure was. There was a request from legal to see if we could put it on the next agenda because Crystal wanted to reach out to the ACLU. And in discussing with Jeffrey, he thought that's that's what we normally do in essence to, you know, do that. I told him if something passes out of committee, it goes on the agenda and then it allows us to, you know, table it or do something else. Once again, uh I I think it's just a slight mistake on all of us uh trying to make sure we follow it correctly. So hopefully that answers it. Um no, no ill intent there. It was just um an oversight, I'll call it. Counselor Leahy.
Just quickly, why would we be uh going to the ACLU?
I I think it was just uh from reading some of the emails, it was just a request that Crystal wanted to follow up with them. It was her her question to it. So I, that's all I could gather. So I'm just trying to get you the information as as I see it. Uh Counselor Lucy.
Thank you. Um you know, Crystal may want to speak to this herself, but um the committee passed something out of um the ordinance committee at a five to zero vote, but it did deal with um handling and perhaps speech issues. And I think that what I understood of the communication was that Crystal wanted to um make sure that we weren't going to trigger any sort of lawsuit um and put the city at risk if we did pass it. So instead of um you know passing it, uh she wanted to to um have some research available for us at the meeting where we did discuss it. So from what I understand, um Counselor McGee, what you're saying is that the process moving forward is that it goes on the agenda and then that request is made in the meeting to the full body and then we would decide whether or not we want to actually hold off the vote or move on the vote.
Correct. I mean, it could have been addressed in committee uh or if it's voted out, then it would have to go on the agenda. Because that's what the ordinance committee or any committee uh recommended. And if at that meeting there is a legal issue or something, then that that's the full body's decision to table it or or do what we want with regards to that.
Right, okay.
Point of order?
Yeah, Counselor McGivern.
President, we don't have anything on the agenda this evening. Obviously, you explained why. We should not be having a discussion and we could not be voting unless it was in legal form.
Right. Well, we can't vote on anything. I just, it was brought up because there was an ordinance that should appear there. So before
I I and I appreciate that, but we shouldn't be discussing it further than that.
Yep, and I just wanted to give you the the heads up as to the procedure.
Not pointing at you. It's all the other discussion that took place.
No, understandable.
Move to the next motion.
With that, we are now on to finance. Thirteen A would be the Committee on Finance who's referred in order that accordance with Master of Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. Counsel hereby accept the provisions of the uh Shannon CSI grant authorized establishment of fund or other method appropriate of accounting. The receipts recommended that it be ad- uh accepted and adopted.
Motion received, pass the first reading for adoption.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh this is the annual grant that we've been receiving for uh many years now. It comes from from the state under the uh under the name of Senator Charles Shannon Community Safety Initiative. Uh it's a grant. I just want to, before I get into the grant itself, just point out the language that you read and you read every time. Uh and every grant has it is that we establish a fund and or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the said grant. Even if it's a reoccurring grant, the a new account is set up each fiscal year for each grant. And that's what the uh the auditors and the uh Department of Local Services or DOR look at in terms of when they're they're auditing us. And uh that is something that is just just wanted to note that. Um this grant is, the total grant is four hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. As always, there is no match to this grant. The police department itself only gets a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Essentially, we're voting on that. Uh they use it in three parts or proposing to use it in three parts this year. Uh this this grant is for gang uh suppression and for other things that they're going on within the city. They use it for uh, they're gonna use seventy-two thousand, two hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for forty-five patrols. Working, working on the uh gang task force, working on extra bodies out there to uh suppress the type of activity, criminal activity we see with gang, gang uh presence. Also, there's gonna be uh forty uh mobilized uh units uh for forty-two thousand dollars that will take what was usually known as our community policing. Really policing is is like everything uh having a a different uh picture in in terms of uh COVID times and the way they do business, but they still want people out there. And there's some administrative cost uh for this particular grant. Three thousand eight hundred dollars is used for administrative. Uh Sergeant Hart was with us. He did go and run through the rest of the grant, which is funneled through the city and goes to partners. Um biggest partner has and is continues to be the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They run an after school program by a bunch of a uh student uh activities. Uh Mass Hire forty-two thousand dollars for an occupation uh training uh program itself, the YMCA for thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh the the grants get smaller. Youth Leadership for five thousand five hundred. Uh the Chicagoe Boys and Girls Club gets eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Hoyoke Community College gets twenty-eight thousand, eighty dollars. Hoyoke High School gets uh thirty-two thousand. I think they get two to thirty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two thousand and two dollars. And that's the bigger ones um. Here's another educational one for eighteen thousand, two two four. The Safe Initiative Program, which we all know is uh geared and guided by Ed Case of the Sheriff's Department. Um we, the committee vetted Sergeant Hart both on this grant. Uh it's pretty much uh you know, consistent with the way they've used the grant over the years. We had a bit of a talk about the, you know, the problem of deficits being found within grants. Um I don't think this particular year Shannon Grant had a deficit, but if I remember correctly, last the year before it did. Uh Sergeant Hart is working closely. The auditor did meet with the uh ordinance committee committee uh meeting last week and as she's been emailing a lot of us has been working with uh trying to come up with some initiatives as to help department heads who are the managers of the grants, you know, to uh to do a better job and uh hopefully, I'm hoping that they they will do a better job um whether it's the school department, the police department, the fire departments. Uh we need to have no deficits at the end of the fiscal year so that we can truly, you know, benefit from the what we know as as free cash. But with in mind what the way the police department's gonna use this and the partners that the grant funnels money through, the good use it's put to. The uh finance committee voted five to nothing to uh to accept and to uh set up the accounting of said dollars.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
I I would need to opt out since my I'm sorry, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to opt out because Mass Hire Hoyoke receives funding for my department to work with the youth uh in our community.
Okay, so you're abstaining from the vote.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, another great job done by the finance chair. Uh I just, I I I just want to just just clarify a couple of things. I I uh it's just impossible to run a meeting and take every single note you gotta take. It's, you you just, you just can't do it. Uh so the 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 number is right. The the HPD is gonna get about half of that amount, about two hundred forty thousand dollars. That that's what goes to HPD. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different vendors, including Mass Hire that gets that gets part of this. And so this is something that we annually, uh the city annually receives from the Commonwealth, uh named after uh this former state senator. And uh and so this is you know, it's the accounting part of it. I didn't have a chance to look through my notes, but I'm going to when other people speak to just to see if in fact this is one of the deficit ones uh from twenty nineteen that was you know, not not a great reflection on anybody. And uh I'm I'm looking forward to a a future meeting of the finance committee, Mr. President. When when we talked about, because there was a rebuttal to all this. And and at some point, we're gonna have a chance to ask the uh the person that rebutted all this uh some some questions relative to the uh to the to the deficits and uh and exactly what the impact yeah, the impacts are. If 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 these deficits have now been made up and because what what the what the chair mentioned is that these are quarterly reimbursements. So I mean, we, the the money should just be you know, like automatic, like you know, the the sun sets in the west. I mean, it's just it just, it just automatic, Mr. President. I I I don't know how and why these things happen um with the deficits. I I I don't want to put the blame on on anybody uh at this point, but but we're gonna have a chance to to talk about this a little more at a uh at a finance committee meeting and I hope people tune in. Thank you.
Counselor Tommen.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mr. President. Um it's definitely a uh a needed uh grant for our community and I I did have some questions for uh Sergeant Hart about the uh the hours of uh for the community policing and he did state uh they used to take the van around and and with COVID, uh they're not utilizing the van as much. But he said they would have more walking patrols and biking patrols out as the weather permitted. Um so I I think that's a a big benefit uh for the hours uh to get that out there in a community for especially a lot of the neighborhoods. I think most of us got to report from Sergeant Hart and some of the areas of the city uh with the calls um uh from throughout the year on on certain uh sectors of the city. Um it'll be a big benefit uh to the community. So it's uh it's good to have this grant on a yearly basis and just hopefully with Tanya and um you know, the department heads uh utilizing uh the the different procedures. Hopefully uh these grants will get paid down and uh the accounting of these grants will be taken care of in a in appropriate manner. So, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to put on record that I am allowed to vote on uh this grant as long uh as the other ones as well. And I I am a member of the Boys and Girls Club, Boys of Directors, but um I I don't get any uh financial gain just uh. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone further? Seeing no one else. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the acceptance of the Shannon Grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Remember, if you're on mute, unmute for the vote, please.
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Abstain.
Oh, yeah, abstain. Lucy?
Yeah, yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Graney, yes, Britta, sorry.
That's okay. Twelve yeas, one abstain.
Wait your vote. You're approved. The acceptance of the Shannon Grant. Thirteen B?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Um if I just may add, um next Tuesday in ordinance, we are going to have that discussion about the grants management in ordinance committee. Um so that's the twenty at six thirty. It'll be first on the agenda for anyone who wants to participate.
Twenty, the twenty-sixth at six thirty, correct? Did I say it right?
Yeah.
All right, so thirteen B, Committee on Finance who's referred in order that the city council appropriate two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of paying cost of conducting a feasibility study to improvements uh be the roof replacement at Sullivan School, roof replacement at Dunhuang School and roof replacement at Ian White School. Uh recommended that it be adopted.
Take a motion to uh receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion.
I'm sorry, we receive the first reading.
Yep. And pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. This is a request from the school department. And it's actually asking the city council to approve uh bonding for the purpose of the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of doing the feasibility study with after receiving an im- invitation from the MSBA to uh do the projects that as as you read, Mr. President, for the three schools, Sullivan, Dunhuang and Ian White. The uh the projects are primarily the replacement of roofs where uh needed and for the most part, it's all replacement of roofs and a couple of repair spots, repair spots where parts of the roof are not as old as the others. The vast majority of the roofs that we're talking about are well over thirty years old. Some as Whitney, Whitney Anderson came before us. Uh some of them are in uh in not too good use where they're they're doing patchwork just to uh make sure that there's not problems with inside the schools at this point in time. I I know we're familiar with the MSBA in in terms of building new schools, but we, this is a MSBA uh uh project. It works similar to to uh building new schools, but it's an alternate it's, I'm sorry, it's an accelerated repair uh grant from the MSBA itself. Uh it does require as a new school, a feasibility study upfront. Uh the the Mr. Anderson pointed out to us that the uh the project itself on the low end would be between seven and nine million dollars. On the high end would be between twelve and sixteen million dollars. We are not voting on that this evening. We would have to have a final approval of going forward with any any projects. Uh once the MSBA came back with with their approval, that we would have the eighty percent reimbursement for the purpose of the project. We do have the eighty percent reimbursement for this two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh we we um I believe, and I did ask uh, we didn't have a treasurer with us, although Counselor Bartley did point out, we would have the treasurer with us and and definitely would have the treasurer with us for the final project itself. Because that's when the uh the bond itself would go out. In this case, the uh the option for a band to be issued by the treasurer's department and our purchasing director was with us. A band would probably or short term borrowing would probably take purse, take place uh in in terms of before the bond itself is uh is put out there. Um the MSBA, you know, is giving us a deadline. The deadline is February fourteenth. Uh the study itself would take place in the spring. A hundred and eighty days to decide, then then there will be a hundred and eighty days to decide if if the MSBA is going to fund it, that we will go forward with the uh with the project itself. Um Counselor Bartley is very nice. He always tells me I give these great reports, but I always feel like I'm missing something important. The uh as I think we all know, Whitney Anderson, when he comes before us, he is prepared and he was prepared with all the details. And the uh I think the gist of it is the roofs need repair and to get an eighty percent reimbursed uh loan grant is is something that would be in the city's benefit. It would be nice if the Commonwealth of Massachusetts recognized us as a gateway community, went back to that ninety percent reimbursement, which is what we should be getting. But in this case, eighty percent is uh is what we can expect and we believe it's worthwhile as opposed to trying to do the projects ourselves. Committee voted five to nothing in favor of uh of going forward with the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Counselor LeBron Martinez? That's from prior. Okay, Counsel Tommen.
Yeah, I think it's a very uh good report uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh the one thing that Whitney did state that that some of these schools uh they're, they have been getting some patchwork done on them on the last several years. Some of these schools uh the roofs uh are well over the thirty years. And there was portions of the roof that uh did need some uh some update by a a licensed roofer. And they've been taking care of that. But uh for for us to put this through to get the the feasibility study, I think is important. Especially with the state uh picking up uh hopefully eighty percent of the the tab. Um it's definitely uh something that uh is in the best interest of our uh of our city. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I I I agree with the all of the prior speakers and uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I try to be nice, but uh but I I I I think you do a great job, so I wouldn't just say it. Uh so but I I do want to point out a couple of things for for counselors that care to care to listen. Uh one is the the range is unbelievable. So it's, Mr. President, one option is seven to nine million. The other range might be twelve to sixteen million. I I I hope we keep that in mind and and the reason is and as the finance chair mentioned, we're gonna have to have the treasurer before us because this is gonna have to be bonded. How it's gonna be reimbursed, I'm assuming it's gonna be actual real eighty percent, not like the fifty-four percent which was which MSBA. So now that's really eighty percent you were getting for the schools. Well, it's not eighty percent. Well, it it is. So hopefully this will be an actual eighty percent when it comes time to to the roof. So so that's why I raised a question to uh so that's why I raised a question to uh, I I don't remember his title, uh, the the building uh, the the building um superintendent for the school department. Uh, but uh, but it's it's important that that we keep it in mind because the the amount of funds that we bond, and I'm not saying schools aren't, but obviously, schools are paramount, but this is gonna impact other bonding capability going forward. So so we need to keep that keep that in mind, and we've got to hear from the city treasurer who's, you know, thank goodness she's with us and she's got so much experience. Uh, she she can guide us on on uh what impact, if any, this this have, whether it's seven to nine million or twelve to sixteen million. I mean, let's be real, Mr. President, if we're if we're going through with this with this feasibility study, you can pretty much take it to the bank that we're gonna actually go ahead and bond that bond uh bond for the roofs, right? I mean, is anybody pretending that we're that we're that's not gonna happen? I mean, I I hope we're not pretending that because because we know it is gonna happen, but it's gotta happen, it's gotta happen within an orderly budget. So because there are multiple priorities for the city of Holyoke, including the schools and including these these three wonderful schools. So uh, counselors that are here and and future mayors are gonna have to be cognizant of all this and and plan accordingly, hand in glove with the city treasurer and with our our financial experts. And uh, so I I I just hope that I hope some of that some of that possibly sinks in and uh that we'll be able to take into consideration uh when we go forward. One thing I didn't hear the chair say, and I I I don't know if I took a note on that, is so when this commences, I think it commences this summer, but I don't want to say that for sure. Um, so the way we look at it, the Commonwealth, the MSBA will pick up two hundred and sixteen thousand. The city of Holyoke, by the way, is still paying the fifty-four thousand. I I'm not sure if I heard exactly where that's coming from. I I assume it's a band, but I I I don't know that to be true, so I I I I mean, I guess we're we're gonna get an explanation on that at some point, but I just I just wrote that as a question mark in my notes. So I don't know where, you know, what the exact cost center is, Mr. President, of the fifty-four thousand. Perhaps the finance chair uh could could enlighten me on that if if uh if if he knows. I don't want to put him on the spot because I I don't think I asked that question that night. And um, uh, one 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 small point, Mr. President, for the first time in, uh, this is my tenth year on the board, uh, for a first time, the school department did not come before us the day before it was due. So yay, school department. Hooray. Thank you.
Hey, Todd, if I could, um,
Counselor.
To um, if I could, uh, I know Joe's probably gonna say it, but uh David, uh, Counselor Bartley, I believe um what Whitney had said was exactly what you had said, that the treasurer would then do a a band for a short time.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Counselor McGivern?
Yes, I and I think taking the the next step too is the portion that the city owes. Um, you know, first of all, it's eventually to be in the bond, if we get to the bond, you know, would was where the city would get the money, but to pay it off, the the good question is, is it gonna be paid off on the city side of the budget or on the school side of the budget? And I, you know, with the uh, if I remember correctly, with the last one we used with these, it's on the school side of the budget that pays it off. But then we get into net school spending, so I think it's a good question. We'll get verified by the uh by the treasurer.
Yep, and I and I do know in the past, the treasurer has given us the the answers that Counselor Bartley has asked, which is regardless of the number, seven to nine, twelve to sixteen, what will the net impact be going forward for the budget? And they do provide that before we we take on any vote. So with that, if there's no further discussion, a motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the two hundred and seventy approval for a bond for three roof study.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait your vote, you're approved. Uh, thirteen C?
Commit a motion to take a thirteen C and thirteen D at the same time?
Okay, so motion is to suspend rules, take up C and D as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? C is the Committee on Finance has referred a memo from Jim Lovell regarding the pilot agreement dated twelve twenty-nine twenty-one, or actually, shoot, twenty. Um, and then the finance committee, this is D, the finance committee who has referred an order of twenty-twenty pilot adjustment recommendations dated four twenty-nine twenty have considered the same, both have been complied with. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The uh committee met, we had uh both the uh manager of the uh Hoyok Gas and Electric, Jim Lovell, and uh Brian Bur- Buragard, I believe title would be a senior engineer uh in management uh himself, and both are both I would think are well respected by the city council and certainly well respected within their field. Um, the the orders that were before us were to discuss, and I'm gonna turn this over or allow you to turn it over if you would, to the maker of the order, Counselor Sullivan, and um, I believe you might be signed on to one of them, but to discuss the uh the pilot agreement and and the newly endorsed uh adjustments to the pilot agreement itself. Um, you know, Counsel, uh, Mr. Lovell did talk to us about the uh the new payment and explained to us that he did negotiate with the uh with the mayor and uh and the mayor's delegate in order for fiscal year twenty thousand, fiscal year twenty twenty to uh one million, one ninety-four, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, pilot agreements and rule of tax payments is what we always called them for this purpose this evening, have always been in place with the uh not only the gas electric, but the housing authority and uh the water department itself. Pilot agreements have come more into the uh front light when we started seeing all the solar fields popping up, and we had a number of different negotiated pilot agreements that came uh before us. Um, the uh this pay- the payments for the gas electric are made in phases, I believe, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong, was quarterly, and I don't want to take any thunder from at least from Counselor Sullivan or anybody else, but the uh committee reports that we did meet with the uh proper people and that both orders were complied with.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, um, the 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 reason I filed the order is because um th- this one in particular, and then it leads, you know, a trail to a bunch of others that we have, but they're they're not being monitored on a regular basis. Um, th- this particular one uh really hadn't been you know, renegotiated or looked at in somewhere, depending on which version of it you look at, between twelve and twenty years. So uh, we we need to do a better job with these. It it was also uh the fact that these were being approved in in effect contracts with with without the approval of the city council, alright? So, uh, I've had several discussions now uh with Crystal on this. We're we're still in a gray area here. There's there's some work to be done. Uh, there are some pilots that absolutely do require, and we'll we'll see those uh later on tonight. But this one, to me, was particularly egregious because it had gone so many years without even being looked at, and even the agreement uh a- and the correspondence that came to us from Mr. Bloomberg uh re- reflect a very poor job um a- and a very poor thought process into how we go about looking at even the valuation of some of these. So I I'm glad we got a a first step a- and started to take a good look at these. We'll we'll be doing some more in the future as we go forward. Uh, glad we had the conversation uh with the manager, and I I really hope that the uh i- in the future, we'll do a much better job at looking at these, looking at the true value of these uh pilot agreements, and then addressing the uh multiple issues regarding uh where the council stands uh a- as far as their input or acceptance of some of these pilot agreements.
Counselor Bartley? Counselor, you're still on mute.
Sorry. Um, the, in the order itself, there was a typo. It said the pilots dated twelve twenty-nine twenty-one, so I I just want to point that we we all know that's 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 wrong, but uh, but the, so I don't know if we have to amend that, but it's just want to point it out, Mr. President. Then the um, uh, but I mean, the the reason we we got to this point i- is is because we had somebody looking at the budget closely, and they noticed that the pilot payments are are off, and then so so Mike should be credited for his uh, his his good work. I mean, I know we didn't get everything that maybe some of us wanted uh in 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 this pilot, but but the the manager did make a commitment in his in his own very incredibly diplomatic way to uh to at least to at least review this on some kind of a orderly basis. I mean, I really don't, I mean, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna get looked at again by by the commissioners, and I I think that's, I I I think that's important, and I think that's important to point out, and and so that so that if there's, I I think it's also important to point out that that the commissioners passed this uh back in April, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, and um, you know, the mayor's office, you know, got around to it in December of twenty twenty. I mean, just see the prior discussion we had a- about Dean Technical High School Communication. See that prior discussion, see multiple other discussions, Mr. President. I I know counselors don't want to hear this, but this, does this sound like a refrain? Uh, it it should, uh, but it's it's um, I mean, a- at least at least Counselor Sullivan had the wherewithal to to look into it and do something about it, and and uh and now there's now there's another hundred grand plus going to the city's budget deservedly, and more to come. Thank you.
Uh, with regards to thirteen C, as mentioned, it's twelve twenty-nine twenty, not twenty-one. So motion should be to correct that or correct the typo?
Bacon.
Favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Counselor Sullivan, your hand is up again, or?
Yep.
Okay.
So, also, it's it's not, i- it's great that we got this extra hundred thousand this year, but by by it not having been paid any attention to for all these years, over the course of this pilot program, it's potentially millions of dollars that weren't made available, and we all know the budget, I I I don't have to continue from there. We all know how wh- what financial condition we are, the other cuts we have to make, and to not have had these dollars available for all of these years, and the potential of them not having been available going forward, or a- and continuing to not have anything in place to make sure that this doesn't continue is what I find to be troubling, even more troubling, so.
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just to uh uh piggyback with Counselor Sullivan says, he does have to go on with this because this is just the type of thing that has cost the city for the y- for over the years, and these are the things that we need to rectify. Thank you very much.
Counselor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to note also that um from what I understand, it's actually helpful for um, you know, those agencies that are negotiating pilots with us, if they are updated on a regular and predictable basis, um, because otherwise, it becomes, you know, sort of arbitrary, and that is hard to predict and hard for like creditors to um, understand like when and how much, and, you know, just to make sort of projections into the future on um, you know, the, uh, I guess, the the credit line and viability of these different projects moving forward. So I think all around, the ability to have um a policy in place that i- that increases um pilots and other sorts of agreements on a regular a- and sort of predictable timeline is going to be useful for everyone.
Counselor McGivern?
Just, and and I agree with everything that's been said, but just so there's no confusion, um, the city council doesn't negotiate any pilot agreement. We don't negotiate anything. It's negotiated through the mayor's office. When you're negotiating with the housing authority, you're negotiating with HUD, and that's a, uh, never been an easy thing to do over the years. Over the years, going back decades, the gas electric has come to the city on many occasions when the city was in uh in need, and it looks like they've stepped up to the plate again. When um Marty Dunn was mayor, and we were facing a extreme fiscal crisis with uh with a five million dollar deficit that went on for about two or three years after uh, it started with nineteen eighty-two with a proposition two and a half and and finished with an override vote in nineteen ninety-two, to where we got truly corrected to where, and thankful to the voters of the city that saved our budget, truly corrected towards where we were supposed to be. But the gas electric paid extra money those years to help us get through some very lean times, and I I guess there was a mechanism in the mayor's office, or maybe it belongs in the auditor's office that, you know, this should come up for review, all of them should come up for review once a year. But we can't negotiate. We can only uh get involved or listen to the uh the good and the bad that comes out of them.
Counselor Lisi? Okay. Uh, with that, seeing no one else, it's thirteen C and D is recommended that that's complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirteen E?
Thirteen E and thirteen F as a package?
All those who suspend the rules, take up B and F as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E is Committee on Finance has referred in order minutes of gas electric commission meeting for four twenty-nine twenty, that's complied with. And then thirteen F, the Committee on Finance has referred in order that the mayor and the purchasing director as well as the manager, HGNE, appear before the finance committee to discuss current plans regarding expansion of electric vehicles within the city fleet. Do we have a specific plan in the terms of how many and what type of vehicles we might be doing this? Do we have plans of having uh rapid recharging stations? Are there any reports that indicate while the investment might be greater in long-term effect to reducing fuel expenses, less carbon dioxide emission, in some cases, vehicles had a longer usable lifespan? That's been complied with. Under discussion.
We want to receive adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive adopt under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the minutes were placed into committee because they had a number of references to both issues, the one we just discussed and the m- and I believe to some of the what we're about to discuss or did discuss in terms of the electric fleet. Um, I'll I'll note that this is probably the main reason that uh Brian Buragard joined us, but Jim Lovell and Brian both stayed for this discussion, and it was a very healthy discussion, but before I get into what the uh what the manager and what the uh gas electric uh chief engineer said to us, I just want to note, one of the things that we learned in the committee discussion was is that Counselor Leahy has an electric guitar, right? Electric guitar.
Guitar?
Electric guitar, Counselor Leahy.
I do have an electric guitar. I'm using the carbon footprint.
I want to.
That's not a hot air guitar?
Doing his duty with the carbon footprint, and Eileen is looking for some royalties from the movie Back to the Future because all we had was vision of Jim being in the movie Back to the Future with this uh car coming out of his garage and charging station. But uh,
Down the wall, you can come and look.
Counselor Leahy, great job. And uh he actually helped the discussion because he understood what a charging station is, and that's part of the uh enhancement of an electric fleet, not just for city vehicles, but also the charging stations being available for uh private-owned vehicles to uh sort of be a place where they where they can charge them. Not everybody can have has their own garage and has a place to charge it at home. Some people have to go to a charging station. Uh, we were talking about expanding the charging stations in the Hoyok Mall into a couple of other locations. But Brian and Jim did uh did talked about the uh, part of this has been going on uh since two thousand nine, the gas electric went into a green community initiative. Um, I I've said this, and I think we all know that our Hoyok Gas and Electric isn't just gas and electric. There's a a G in their name for green, and they are one of the leading municipal and one of the leading electric companies and gas companies in the Commonwealth when it comes to being green. Two thousand eighteen, the electric vehicle fleet uh became expanded, and and respects on the on the G and E itself as to how that works. They work with city department heads, they work with uh with anyone who is interested with their their customers, with the uh with our constituents, and they work very hard to make sure that Hoyok is is the leading um city when it comes to uh this initiative, when it comes to being green. So the committee was grateful for their presence, and uh we report that the orders have been complied with.
Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President, and yeah, I I I learned a lot. It was the order that I filed. Uh, I do think that the city needs outside of the G and E to to demonstrate some leadership on this, uh, but I also want to thank the G and E and Mr. Lovell and Mr. Buragard. Outside of the G and E to to demonstrate some leadership on this, uh but I also want to thank the G and E and Mr. Lovell and Mr. Borgard. They did. Come in and provide and they gave information about uh the ability to help owners charge their vehicles and Counselor Counselor Leahy was uh. One of those people that indicated that he did that and uh. But there also, as we move forward and as we get more and more electrical vehicles, we need to make sure that we have enough charging stations in all sections of the city. I mean, one of the issues would that I consistently hear from people that are thinking about it is, you know, where do I charge it? How quickly can I do it and all those kind of things? Uh, H G and E was planning on more electric vehicles in their fleet. Expanding that in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and the the facts again, I part of my logic again on this is that uh science indicates. That electric vehicle produces about eighty-six hundred fewer pounds of carbon in a year than a gasoline powered engine. Uh, and again, going to the idea that we have so many areas in this city that have uh. Uh, breathing issues and 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 health issues that potentially could be improved. And also that there's a potential saving for the consumer in terms of fuel savings of about a thousand dollars a year. Uh, I do hope that city departments will at least start to look at what they might be able to do. Uh, Tennessee Valley Authority in which is where I got the information uh indicated that they have originally. You know, not had a lot of people signing up and now they've started to get people and they've seen uh. The air pollution reduced, they've seen savings on a year-to-year basis, even though they had to come up with more money in the beginning. And the recommendation, so if we were to end up with a thousand uh vehicles, we would probably end up needing something like a hundred. Charging stations to really be able to motivate them and to move them through so that it makes it somewhat convenient for someone to have an electric vehicle if they don't have. A a home garage that they can charge it. But I did, I think the gas electric, I commend.
President.
Hold on, Counselor Grady, hold on.
They're definitely environmentally uh trying to do the best they can to uh clean our air and keep it clean.
Counsel Counselor Leahy then Counselor Grady.
Yeah, thank you. So this meeting was a very good meeting and as always, uh uh Jim Lovell, the superintendent of Gas Electric, who was one of the best. Uh, best leaders that I think I've met in my career. Uh, he really knows how to run a uh department the right way. And he came in and we discussed, um, you know, different things, but one of the big reasons is uh. They can't really go forward with it is because they don't have large uh green trucks yet. They are coming out with them. I've been following that. If anybody is interested in the stock market, there's some good stocks out there to be purchased. Um, and it's down the road that they're going to be coming with larger vehicles that are electric. Um, but as everybody else said, I did buy an electric car, the hybrid, I get about seven hundred miles for about twenty-six dollars. Um, I I seem never to be at a gas station any longer, which is uh pretty unique and. The city of Hoyok does something that's unbelievable. No other community, I I I really don't think any other community around here does it. They actually give any person that has a car and lives in Hoyok the charging station, which is about a five hundred dollar um fee. Now, if you if you do, if you bought, if you get it and you decide um you're going to charge it after eleven o'clock. And and it's not like you have to wait up to eleven o'clock, you could uh you could set a setting. Uh, the gas electric will give you a discount on your monthly fee as well. Um, so uh having getting a free box. Doing it after eleven o'clock, not using gas, you're going to save a lot of money. Thank you.
Counselor Grady.
Yeah, Mr. President, I found a conversation to be very interesting uh with that particular uh meeting. And the information it was uh digested from uh uh Counselor Leahy was very interesting about a le- electric vehicle. And from the gas electric, it's something that uh uh certainly something that perhaps somebody like me would never have considered, but now I am. Definitely considering something like that uh for the future, so it uh it was very interesting, not only as uh uh savings for the city, but. Also for the possibility of uh residents to uh perhaps save some money on their transportation costs. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Great meeting and uh as as Jim stated, uh it's really definitely some savings uh for our community. We are. Uh, considered a green community and uh the G and E, Brian Bjorgard and Jim Lovell stated, um, they have the green team and um. I think believe twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five, they will be converting uh about twenty percent of their fleet of the smaller vehicles. Uh, and the larger vehicles are right now, they're not uh doing that with the electric, but. Um, in 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 the long run, uh it does reduce our carbon footprint and it does save energy costs. Uh, so we're looking forward. In the future of uh uh more electric vehicles in our community, not just by our our citizens, but also by the different uh departments in our city. So, thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is that E and F have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Off to Public Safety Committee, fourteen A. Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that the DPW give a public safety committee an update on sidewalk repairs for North Hampton around Hampden Knolls. Uh, and Woods Ave recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Murphy.
Received and adopted.
So motion is received adopt that's been comply with or discussion?
Uh, so DPW did anticipate did indicate uh that uh. The North Hampton Street portion of this order, not including Woods Avenue, can be resolved. As part of a state transportation bond package, which they believe was included in the in the uh passage that took place, I think that day. Uh, the estimated cost of the total project in North Hampton Street was two point five million. Uh, if that this is not included in the state bonding, then a capital appropriation or some kind of. Chapter ninety funds would be needed to complete the project. The Woods Avenue sidewalk would need to be considered for later. Uh, providing financing for the project uh. And I I I filed an order that kind of tries to address some of these things down the road, but uh so committee report is that. And we we know we have a potential on North Hampton Street and we know we need to continue to look on trying to get some resolution on Woods Avenue.
Right, yeah, and just to to update people, i- it it's a two point five million dollar total project for sidewalks and the street to be repaved. From Hampden all the way down to finish where connect where they did up to Mountain Park. So and then they have the bike lane, they'd extend, potentially extend the sidewalks out to put in green space uh or tree belt. Uh, so to nail the road to help avoid the speeding, everything else that's going on. So it was passed, we're waiting on the governor. The real issue is even if he signs it, i- it doesn't tell exactly if it's the first year, second year, it's a five-year window. As to when this could possibly happen, but the the issue is that the money, as long as he signs it, is there to get it done, but it might. Be right away or it might take some time to ultimately fix uh all of North Hampton, all the way, you know, connecting it down to Mountain Park, so. Good news, but we just got to now wait and see when they're gonna.
Did I just add one more comment on that?
Yeah, Counsel Murphy.
And and we did ask if we know it's coming on a third year, could the city begin to do some of the project? Ahead of time and be reimbursed with the bond when it comes due so that we're not necessarily having to wait. To year three to get some of the more critical work done, so. Yeah, they were, we didn't get an answer yet, but we were hoping to get an answer in near future, here's to. That we can do that and not be forfeiting that money.
Yeah, I think I think that's the the hopeful thing is that we we get approved or year one, not year five. Uh, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I I think it's just a it's a waiting game now and it's important that the residents know that. Uh, the money will be forthcoming, but it it could be a couple of years down the road uh. Uh, to take care of the the street and to to get those uh possibly green space and and some of those sidewalks extended. Where um, you know, they'll slow the traffic down because that is a area from Hampden Street all the way down to Mount Park, which. There is some speeding, um, and I'm sure the every year there's there's patchwork up there to where the roads, uh, you know, the potholes. Especially around the Bemis area that every year they're there two or three times trying to fill those holes up, uh, so it'll be nice to get that street done, uh. Just uh have a little patience, I think is the key right now, so. Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Counselor Grady. Yep.
Yeah, just quickly, the reason I I just want to let uh residents know, the reason I piggybacked that Woods Avenue on this order was that uh. Not too long ago, uh, I witnessed a a person walking down Woods Avenue, pushing a baby carriage in the middle of the street. Because one side of the uh the street is a gravel sidewalk and the other side is an asphalt sidewalk that's in disrepair. And at the top, Francis Avenue has a brand-new sidewalk and at the bottom, Hillside Avenue has a brand-new concrete sidewalk. So I thought that should be something that the city should address because it's definitely a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I may probably file a, I may probably file a separate order to uh see if we can get that uh this this paid attention to. Thank you.
Okay, a- and I'll I'll thank the the state rep and and Senator Viallis for for helping out with this to get this pushed through. As well as former uh counselor Gordon Alexander, who worked with me to really um start the process to really get North Hampton Street addressed. Because it's it's been that bad. So with that, I I I think it was that it's been complied with. Seeing no one further, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Sullivan, you had a request to go out of order for something?
Yeah, we we have um Mimi Panich from the CPA committee here and if we i- if you could indulge me and let us take the two CPA orders out of order. Uh, so she can she can get on with the evening.
Second it.
So those were late files, correct, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, so I have. G and H, motion is suspend rules, go out of order to G and H as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, G is from Counselor Sullivan, that the city council accept. The amendment to the grant contract already approved by the council from the Community Preservation Committee to extend. The funding deadline and additional extension provisions for Valley Opportunity Council. H is an order from Counselor Sullivan, that the city council accept the amendment to the grant contract already approved. Uh, by the council, Community Preservation Committee to extend the funding deadline for Victory Theater. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, um, so uh could I make a motion also to allow uh uh Mimi to speak if needed?
Tucker. President, we need a vote on uh, we're taking action.
That's what I was gonna get to right now. So the motion first would be to take up final action on G and H tonight. So allows for everyone to discuss and everything else.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So now the motion is to allow uh Ms. Panisch to address the council with regards to G and H.
Well, she she's you're just, she's here to back me up in case there's any question. I just wanted to get that out there in case I got stuck, so.
That's why I was trying to let her just start talking, they keep you out of trouble.
All right.
So I think I'm totally unnecessary, but I figured just in case.
All right, so allow to allow if you have questions uh for her, uh, motion be suspended rules to allow her to speak or answer questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Mike, if you want to give us a little information on it and then we'll go fair, Counselor Sullivan, sorry, Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, so these are um both um grants that were previously approved by the council. All we're looking here to do is change the deadlines on them. So the the first one for Valley Opportunity Council. Is time sensitive, that's why we need to get it done on the floor uh tonight. Uh, they have a January thirtieth deadline. Um, or January thirty-first, um, so uh and basically it's a uh, nothing has changed. Um, as far as the uh the contract itself goes, all of the wording, all of the stipulations are the same. We're just looking to change the dates and extend it out one year. Um, so our original uh terms uh approved by the council on March nineteenth of twenty nineteen. Uh, called for the uh construction to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So we we need to extend that out a year and all all the rest of the terms and conditions stay exactly the same as what was previously approved.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Sullivan or any questions for uh Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just uh so as far as the Victory Theater is concerned.
Well, this is right now with this.
Okay.
We we at Counselor Sullivan, we we took him up as a package, so you can explain both and if people want to vote on it separately, you can do that. So if you just want to talk about victory.
Let out, well, you want me to, it's pretty much the same summary exactly for the Victory Theater as well. It it's just extending it out uh one year, so.
To to two twenty twenty-two or?
Uh, that would be, yeah, to twenty twenty-two.
All right, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, can I, just through the chair, uh, Counselor Sullivan, can uh can can you explain what 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 was the project for V O C? And that's one question and then and then is the Victory Theater under some similar kind of a deadline? Because I'm in no mood to vote for that tonight. I'd I'd rather that go to committee if if unless it's under a strict deadline.
No, the Victory Theater is not under a a strict deadline, so that.
Okay, so so that that one could hypothetically go to committee for an orderly discussion instead of getting pressured to do it tonight. And then what what is the program relative to the V O C? I I I don't recall the vote.
The the V O C was um, we had a fifty, it was a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, fifty thousand of it was um going to uh three forty-eight Chestnut Street. It it's corner of uh that and uh forty-eight fifty-two Franklin, uh, and the um. Let's see, uh, a- and then the other was for three forty-eight Chestnut and three thirty-seven Chestnut. Fifty thousand was under historic and fifty thousand was under housing, so the. The uh original one for three forty-eight Chestnut was for facade rehabilitation. And um the uh Franklin was for housing preservation and it was masonry repaired. Uh, point uh brick pointing and cleaning and uh the uh other one was uh. Installation exterior siding and new windows to stop water infiltration.
A- and the deadline, the current deadline is what and the new deadline is is what?
Uh, the current. The current deadline. Uh, was for the work to be completed by December of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, if I can just jump in here, I think that I can help clarify this a little. In that the urgency here is because just like with the housing grant that was before you a few weeks ago. This is a situation where we're basically using this hundred thousand to attempt to create a match for some thirteen million in state funds. The deadline V O C is under is to resubmit for that grant and they need to do that by the end of this month. And they need to have a commitment for our city funds in order to make that submittal. And as with the previous housing grant, what we're trying to do is also arrange for there to be a termination. For this grant in the event that they can't get the matching grant funds. So that's the urgency here. It is less to do with their construction deadline in the original contract. And more to do with the fact that if we don't extend this, they won't be able to apply for that thirteen million.
Mr. President.
Uh, uh, I Counselor Bartley's.
Thank you, and I thank uh uh the, Mimi, you're a C P, you're not the CPA chair, are you?
I am not the CPA chair. I am just the person who spent the most time writing the submittal materials, which is why I'm here instead of Kip.
Okay, I I I just want to refer you by your ti- title, but I don't know what it is, but thank you for that. I I understand that part as well with V O C. I. I I I I think their track record speaks for itself, so I I wouldn't have an issue with them. Um, but for my part, to vote on the Victory Theater now without a a crisis or a deadline. I I I I will not vote to support that tonight, so I I'd rather that go to committee. Um, I wish these were put on a public agenda, first of all, but since they're not, uh, we have to deal with it now and uh so the the. V O C, I would, I I'll vote for Mr. President tonight. Uh, Victory Theater, I I will not support tonight. Thank you.
And so to Mike or Ms. Panisch, there's no rush on the Victory Theater, kind of like the V O C. Well, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Ms. Ms. Panisch, yeah?
Well, I would defer to Counselor Sullivan, but to my knowledge, there is no urgency with the Victory Theater and no reason it can't be reviewed in committee.
Mimi is correct and we have no problem sending that to committee.
Okay. Counselor Grady and then Counselor.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to reiterate what uh Counselor Bartley said that uh, you know, the first one, a absolutely. Uh, let's let's get that done, but uh I think the Victory Theater needs to go to committee for very, very serious discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McGivern.
Just uh adding.
Just, uh, adding on the Vic, on the Valley Opportunity Council projects, when we had the, uh, the director before us, uh, we, we talked a lot about the projects that councillor Sullivan just outlined. And we also noted that each of these projects remain on or are on and will remain on the tax rolls, which I think is important. Not only is CPA money being used to good use, there's, uh, the extra benefit of, uh, taxes being collected on the properties themselves. I also noted when he was with us that if you're ever walking down High Street, they look at the facade at the, uh, Valley Opportunity about three, two, three years ago. They, uh, they redid the facade and it looks like Old Hoyok, but brand new. It's an incredible project and, I think Valley Opportunity Council speaks for itself and the work that they do.
Okay. So we say, any further questions for anyone or any comments? Seeing none, we can now take them up separately. First one is G, which is the Valley Opportunity Council. Motion would be to receive, adopt and approve, which then would be a roll call for us. Okay with that? Okay. So clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for, granting the extension for Valley Opportunity Council for one year, if I heard everything correctly.
Anderson Burgos?
Yeah.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the extension for H, which is the Victory Theater to Finance?
Motion to send to, uh, Finance?
Well, I have no problem, uh, taking care of it in finance as long as DGR doesn't want it. I did David, they love us. We did the Valley Opportunity Council. I think we did the Victory Theater too, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
Well, if I could just say thank you to, uh, committee person, uh, Panich, Mimi, thank you for joining us. Uh, Mike always needs help and we appreciate you being here. There's any upgrades in those seats that you have and is that the Bronco Stadium?
That is the Denver Bronco Stadium.
Good call, Joe.
If, if we see any upgrades in your seats, we're gonna do a nodding on the CPA money.
I have been horned.
Thank you for being with us.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Mr. President?
Yeah, councillor Graney.
What is, what, what's the, the, the logical reason to send it to Finance instead of DGNR?
I, I just asked because it, it's dealing with the, uh, the CPA granting them money. So usually it goes to Fin. Go wherever you want councillor, I just asked.
Well, I, I'd refer it to DGNR, but it's already been referred to Finance.
Well, we have not voted on it yet councillor. There was a question, did you want Finance? And then they went back and forth and they said, fine. But that's the will of the body, so we can vote on that. Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks councillor Sullivan for the work you do to CPA and thanks Mimi for your patience tonight to, uh, give your input on, uh, on this issue. I think it's important that we, um, you have this discussion and to extend that. So they're able to try to get some of that state money for their, their project. I really appreciate your, your effort tonight.
Well, thank you. And we appreciate the way the city council has come through on these things.
Thanks.
So is the will to send to Finance? Is that where everyone wants it to go?
Finance.
Alright, so motion is to send it to Finance. All those in favor? To Mimi and, and to my, our councillor Sullivan, thank you very much. I always say, uh, especially with, with Mike is he's, you know, he, jumped on the committee to help out and he always gets us the information. I know it was a late file, but councillor Sullivan is very, uh, proactive in getting us the information as fast as possible. And I, I think this was just a timeline issue. So I, I appreciate everything councillor Sullivan that you do with this committee. And for Ms. Panich for, uh, being on tonight and staying late. If I knew earlier, I would have pulled you right up, uh, sooner. So I, I apologize. I didn't know.
No, no, it is an honor being here and it's always interesting to watch you all work. So, you know, thank you for being so hospitable. And, you know, thank you for the votes tonight.
Well, thank you for everything and we hope you have a wonderful night. Um, with that, is there anyone else that is going to be, that we should take up out of order? So it's not too late for them? If, mm, seeing no one, we'll go right back to the agenda, which is fourteen, B, Committee on Public Safety who was referred in order that DPW Suez City Engineer developed a plan, to regrade the top of West Glen Street due to the current grading waters not flowing to the catch basins, resulting in, uh, resulting in a dangerous road condition. Once the plan is developed, please consult the mayor, city council to implement financing. Department is the order residents, uh, are aware of the needs, recommend that the order has been complied with and refer to Finance.
As the committee report is that it has been complied with, referred to Finance, uh, the DPW and the city engineer have studied the problem. Uh, and they expect, uh, to correct the situation this summer, assuming, that for the, assuming financing for the project with an anticipated expense of between thirty five and forty thousand dollars. Uh, Dana Hunt was one of the neighbors who spoke on behalf of, of the neighborhood regarding their concerns and he did seem to be pleased, uh, that this problem can be resolved shortly. And, and it's, it's important that we, make sure that the financing is done, uh, and we get these projects done. There's, quite a few coming through that have safety issues, uh, definitely quality of life issues that we need to make sure we get done, but, really recommend that it's been adopted, referred to Finance so that we can make sure we get the money.
Anyone further councillor Bartley? No, or?
No, that's a great, great reporter. It's, it's all right there. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great meeting and to have the residents join on and, and hear, uh, the real bad issues and I, I thank councillor Bartley for, for bringing this up. The, the ICE issue that was mentioned as to what's going on there was absolutely shocking. So, good result to this and hopefully it gets done quickly. Councillor McGivern?
And one of the things I learned and I, I think we know more and more, it's, it's part of our problem and many of the areas in the, uh, it's often the, uh, the mountain range itself, you know, but it's, and a lot of this, our city engineer said a lot of this water is not surface water, as much as it is, uh, high water table and water coming to the surface. That's when you see bubbling up in the road, you see bubbling up in other areas and you see water that kind of, uh, forms, you know, not needed lakes within, uh, within property. But if you don't have someplace for the water to go, it's just gonna, cause multiple problems. Uh, Finance will be happy to take this on. We all know, we need something from either a transfer from the, uh, the DPW and or Suez and or the mayor, in front of us to take a final vote, but we'll see if we can, uh, remind some people, we're looking to see this project funded.
Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, uh, looking forward to having this discussion in Finance and, uh, we got a chance to catch on to that meeting. Not, rarely do I get into a public safety meeting, but this was quite an interesting, uh, couple, uh, items that I wanted to speak on, cause very familiar with that, area on the top of West Glen Street and, um, uh, the neighbors did, uh, explain everything, you know, that's actually happening up there. And I, I did see it firsthand a number of years ago. Um, but part of it is too, is the grading of the road and, where the catch basins are, the water doesn't actually get into the sewer system. So they'll have to do the, the whole upper part of the road. So it's, uh, just make sure, make sure that we can try to get the funding and looking forward to the discussion and, uh, to try to take care of this as, as soon as possible. Thank you.
We don't want those neighborhood mailmen slipping.
Not at all, not at all.
So motion to, uh, that it's been complied with and send over to Finance. All those in favor? Fourteen C, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that HGNE examine the possibility of putting lighting, which will shine into the alleyway between High and Maple. One, one from Sergeant and one from Hampshire Street, is possible due without causing lighting to shine into apartment homes. Then please install at the owner's convenience. The alleyways are serious concern, with trash dumping and drug use. Recommend that it's been complied with.
Uh, committee voted three to nothing that, uh, the order's been complied with. We did meet with, uh, both Mr. Moriarty from One Hoyok and Mr. Williams from Williams Auto, as well as, uh, Mr. LeVell from the Gas and Electric. Uh, and the HGNE will work with both Mr. Moriarty and Mr. Williams to install lighting within the alley. Uh, at a minimal yearly expense to the property owners, which they both agreed with. Again, this is an attempt to try to, keep up or clean up, uh, the alley so that we're not getting people dumping, we're not getting people doing illegal things or, or, uh, unhealthy things in, in the alley as much as possible. And I, they both appreciated it. They are very cooperative of using their buildings to make sure they don't, have lighting go into apartment buildings. Um, and hopefully this can make that alleyway a little bit safer.
Seeing no one, uh, councillor McGivern?
It's, uh, always, uh, good to remind everybody that, and, and I know the city council understands it, but, that alleyways are essentially privately owned by the butters. They own half of the alleyway of butting their property and it could be on each side, the different of butter. On this, uh, councillor Murphy's, uh, leadership, this, uh, this was a great, initiative to listen to the, uh, some of the property owners, including the owner of the, uh, of, uh, uh, the new, uh, Mike Moriarty with the, uh, with that, Hoyok one, you know, and, and with, uh, with the owner of the, the car dealership with Scott Williams. Um, they, they, you know, understand the importance of keeping this alleyway safe, making it safer and keeping it clean. And the burden that's put on property owners itself. And it was nice to, uh, have the gas and electric, which they'll, they'll do this throughout the city, but, unfortunately it's privately owned, so the electricity, electricity, which doesn't amount that much, does have to be absorbed by the, uh, by the property owners. But it was a great order, great discussion and, uh, someday if, you know, the old days, we needed the alleyways, for picking up trash and a number of other things. Now it's for public safety vehicles and for the handful of residents that have, garages and they have to drive through the alleyway to get where they park their cars. But, uh, the inconvenience, of course, for the utilities that are still in many alleyways. We'll just, uh, have to, we have to work with them and even though the city doesn't own them, I think it's great that we do work with them.
Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It just goes to show a little bit of work and people working together, the business owners, the community and, uh, the city council that, uh, things can get accomplished in a short order. So looking forward to having some resolution there with, uh, with that area. A very tough, uh, area of the city in that alleyway to make it a little bit safer for, for the businesses and the people that live right, right around that, uh, area. So, thank you.
So with that, fourteen C, motion is as complied with. All those in favor? All opposed? Fourteen D, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order to the manhole cover over the sewer drain in front of two oh three West Franklin Street be replaced. The resident at the location as well as others have reported appears to be damaged and degrading. They also reported that the damage causes, uh, drainage issues and, uh, water on the sidewalk from heavy rain. Consider that's been complied with.
Of course, the order's been complied with, uh, three, nothing. And, uh, the DPW, uh, has, did go and check it out. They recognized that there is a problem. Uh, and their expectation is that they can potentially correct it this spring. Again, I would just make sure that whatever the correction is, if it's costing money, we make sure we provide the resources to get these kind of things cleaned up. But the order has been complied with and hopefully it'll be corrected by the end of the spring.
Councillor McGivern?
I, I'm not sure what it is, Mr. President, but that, uh, new ward six councillor, you know, he asked for something, snapped his fingers. And these electrics just get done. If I, you know, if I was, uh, other ward councillors, I'd be, uh, listening to, uh, our, our good ward six councillor a little bit closer.
Well, this one is, uh, is complied with.
You've got him speechless, Joe.
That's hard to do.
I'm speechless.
Alright, all those in favor? E was already done. There was no public service, no DGNR, no chartering rules and no joint committee. So on to motions, orders, resolutions. Nineteen from councillor Barn Martinez, that the city council through appropriate committee invite in, uh, Dr. Vasquez Matos, current superintendent to give an update on the status of schools during this pandemic and the future plans, for students at HPS.
Make a motion to be referred to the joint committee, uh, joint committee, school committee and city council.
Motion to the Senate Joint Committee, all those in favor? Councillor Murphy?
Just there, cause I, and, and I just want to make sure, cause I know, we, we are still chairing that committee, correct?
It's, it's, it's our turn this year, so it goes to the city council side. We set up the meeting and then send it over to, uh, the school committee. So it, it, it falls on us whereas last, last cycle, it was, it fell on them to set up everything and have the meetings at their location. But now it's all Zoom, so.
Okay. And if I can, uh, councillor LeBron Martinez, I also have an order in there talking about what we're gonna do in September. So if you can, uh, also include that in terms of the agenda, I'd appreciate that. And I did talk to someone from the school committee today who also, is very concerned about what the plans are now and also what are the plans, assuming, we really don't get back to school till probably September on a full-time basis. How do we, how do we help those kids catch up? And especially the kids in the younger grades that are, you know, falling behind and every concern is if they don't catch up by the third or fourth grade, we have problems going down the road. So I, again, I would appreciate it. If you can include my order with yours, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
And through.
Alright, so hold on one second. Uh, councillor Bartley, then councillor Tomlin, and then I'll keep going down.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is a tremendous order. In fact, it's so tremendous, I, I filed almost in exactly the same order. Uh, and number thirty four and, and I've got it arranged where I'm, I'm gonna have, uh, have the superintendent come to DGR under the, the GR part. Uh, probably February, but maybe in March depending, because he and I are gonna have his discussion Friday. So I, I don't know if you wanna, have a joint school, I mean, that's, that's all good, but, um, but he's gonna come before DGR, uh, at some point. So we'll ask him all sorts of questions. And, and as we generally do, but.
Do you wanna just?
No, whatever, whatever, whatever the maker of the order wants to do, I, I'm gonna, I mean, the, the, the doctor's already agreed to come to DGR. So we, we just, we just have to schedule it, but he, he wants to know a little more about us. So we're gonna have a discussion on Friday, just as a preview, if you will. But I, I, no, I, I, I don't care what, what happens with this order. If you want to send it to joint committee, that's great. If you don't.
So you're, so you're saying, um, I would be, first of all, um, through the president, um, do I, this, do I have, I still have to run it through the, uh, joint committee, correct? In order for them to be part of it?
So, so your order says through the appropriate committee. In essence, you could send it to the joint committee and have a meeting there. Here councillor Bartley has filed number thirty four, of which he's gonna have him in as a DGNR committee and he could take it up there, if that's what we would like to do.
I'm also a part of his committee, so, uh, I mean, it will be fine.
Okay, so.
The rules, Mr. President, and take up thirty four as well and as a package and then we'll refer them both to DGR. Is that okay?
That, that's what I was gonna ask. So suspend the rules, take up thirty four with nineteen. All those in favor? All opposed? So thirty four is from councillor Bartley. Order that, uh, Dr. Albert Vasquez Matos, HPS receiver appear before DGNR committee. Take thirty four and nineteen and send it to DGNR. Is that what we're looking for? Alright, so councillor Tomlin has his hand up.
I'm all set. That's what I was just gonna point out to just have it to go, have him come out once and have him come to the DGNR committee.
Right. Councillor Anderson Burgos, did you have a question earlier or?
Yeah, I just want to say through, through the president McGee to, uh, councillor Gladys Lebron. My schedule has changed, so now there's not an issue of scheduling, so feel free whenever you're ready to schedule that.
I'll, I'll get the, um, other meeting going for, for the order that Murphy has put in.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. So with that, nineteen and thirty four will go to DGNR. All those in favor? Twenty is from councillor McGee, order that the city council ministry of assistant appointment be a two-year appointment that coincides with city council terms. That would go to, to rules. All those in favor? Twenty one from councillor McGee, order that the receiver superintendent or the mayor's office provide the MOU for homeless shelter. That's already been addressed, so I'll just give this leave to withdraw. All those in favor. Twenty-two.
Make a motion, Mr. President, if we could to take items twenty-two and twenty-four as a package.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up twenty-two and twenty-four as a package, all those in favor. Twenty-two is fifteen thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents from the police to injured on duty. Twenty-four is four thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents from firefighters to injured on duty. Motion be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, every meeting we will see this, it's simply the moving of. Line item, the salary monies from one line item where a person is working, a public safety officer is working. To a line item where they were probably temporarily injured on duty, still getting paid, but may have had to to uh, take some time off. We do this for accounting purposes, so we know the dollars that are spent, you know, equal the uh, service that is provided. Make a recommendation that be passed the first reading.
Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor. All those opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two and twenty-four.
Mr. President.
Uh, uh, hold on, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, can we just know how many in each department?
I, I apologize, sorry, thank you, Counselor. Uh, for police. Four. For fire. Two.
Thank you.
You're welcome, so Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, uh, and I, I would just like to remind everybody, this is something we've gotta look at. Going forward, we've been doing this right along, but now it's come to our attention. And each time I'm gonna remind everybody that when we do this, when we transfer it to injured on duty, they're receiving this money. Uh, without having any federal or state taxes taken out.
Well, let's file an order, uh, to have. The treasurer and. Tax collector come in, I, I actually the treasurer come in on that. We can do that, we can do a separate order on that, because these are gonna keep coming up, so we should might as well just file an order for that, for next meeting, no late files. Yep. We got enough late files, alright, so twenty-two and twenty-four, uh, to pass the second reading, clerk is gonna call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for both.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Greeney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tallman.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approve those two, twenty-three.
I can make a motion, Mr. President, to suspend the rules and take twenty-three, twenty-five and twenty-six as a package, refer to committee on finance.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up those three, twenty-three is seventy-five thousand, eight twenty-three. From pay solicitor to uh, council services. Twenty-five is the stained glass window, uh, grant for fifty thousand, it looks like. Twenty-six is the gateway cities, um, looks like another grant for twenty thousand. All, all three of those to finance, all those in favor. Twenty-seven was already done, twenty-eight is from Counsel Murphy. Uh, order that the city council encourage the mayor to appropriate a percentage of yearly interest from a stabilization account in order to make sure. That projects nearly around the city be funded completely as soon as possible, projects like West Glen Street. Which is thirty-five to forty thousand sidewalks on Woods Ave, North Hampton Street intersection. Uh, Saint Jerome, Dwight Street corner also be included as well as other sidewalks, the goal is to get these projects which impact the quality of life. Uh, without delay and lack of funding when in fact civilization continues to grow.
Make a motion if we refer to the finance committee.
Can I be added to that order? Thank you. And I wanna thank the council for supporting my previous order, asking the mayor to set up a, an account to fund projects like this. Maybe with your charming way of writing it, Counsel Murphy, it will happen this time.
Charming.
Murphy.
Alright.
Again, if I keep seeing these things in public safety and like, almost every single time, we recognize we got a problem. We recognize it's a safety issue, it's a, uh, a quality of life issue in that particular neighborhood, I know Counselor Anderson Burgos talked about. Someone falling on Saint Jerome, uh, Counselor Granny just talked about Woods Avenue, I mean, we've got, we've got things that. We need to do and it's always subject to funding. The order, what I'm suggesting is, we would always still be raising money in the stabilization fund, but we would take a percentage of the growth of stabilization fund. To improve the quality of life and and resolve problems. That year, not five, ten years down, or when we get chapter ninety or something else, obviously, we can still get chapter ninety and use that, but the. I mean, these are issues that. Uh, we need, we need to resolve, I know on Saint Jerome, we were told, well, it's not subject to community development funds and we'll have to try to find some money. But there is money there, uh, if we look at, I think we already had one point two million dollars in interest on the stabilization. So if we were to use fifty percent, we're still increasing the stabilization fund by six hundred thousand. And now we're improving the quality of life for our residents, which is one of our major functions, so I'm hoping we can. And I hope the mayor will consider doing this, I know he considered doing it to balance the budget. I would like to consider doing it to improve the quality of life for our neighbors.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, so uh, thank you, uh, thanks for the maker of the order, I, I'm glad to mention West Glen because that's, that's an issue. I, I think where this is driving is towards a. Diverting funds from stabilization for uh, for a capital budget, that's what I'm reading this to be, because that's all the things that are pointed out. Now, if that in fact is the case, I would happily sign my name onto it, um, uh, if that, if that is it, I would. And that's something I, I requested of the mayor's office. Three years ago, I also requested at the, at behest of a, of a constituent, have an open checkbook, two years ago. No communication, I said the word refrain before, now we've mentioned it twice, I know counselors don't wanna hear it, but I'm gonna say it again. Uh, there, there's zero communication and zero action upon initiatives that are impacting quality of life, I mean, I'm not making this stuff up, just. Cause the, for a feel-good, i- it's, it's things that are constantly raised. Um, so I, I would also say, you, you might, you might consider uh, copying this to the treasurer, you might consider copying it to the mayor. Uh, and ask and humbly asking, um, the mayor at least, I know the treasurer will come, because she's great. Uh, humbly asking the mayor to appear before a finance committee, I, I know we can't order him to do anything, even though it says order. But, but we should, we should humbly, you know, get some eh, eh, feedback on, 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 on this one, so uh, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, if the maker of order, I, I would love to sign on to this, when you, we stated that quality of life throughout the city and, and using the funds this way, I think. Is, is, is important, so I, I, I definitely go along with your idea on this situation.
Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you, uh, I'll be looking forward to this conversation, especially some guidance from the treasurer and um. I, I'm under the impression at this point in time that um, stabilization is. Um, not intended for use in this way to plug up the budget would be appropriate. Um, I also think that in terms of a one-time expenditure to, um, like it was very much in favor of using stabilization to offset the. Tax increase, uh, but I don't think that the intended pers- purpose of stabilization is funds and projects like this. Um, and what I think we really need to create instead in order to fund capital improvements is a capital stabilization plan. Uh, capital stabilization funds and um. I think we have reached, like to, to the point that Counsel Murphy is making in this order, like we have reached the place where the. Stabilization fund is healthy, it's um, in, increasing, it has, it's, it's accruing interest every year. Um, that's our rainy day fund and we will get um, points taken against us if we're using it for. Um, capital improvements, for other sorts of expenditures that are part of our operating budget, so I think what we, we could consider doing is perhaps. Um, using capital is a, I'm sorry, stabilization funds to seed a capital stabilization fund. Uh, but, but I do think that um, I agree with the intent of the order, I don't think that stabilization is the. The proper fund to do that with, um, but I don't think we're so far off from a position where we could actually seed. Um, a capital, a capital stabilization fund.
Mr. President.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, um, I just wanna be clear that the reason that I'm signing on to this order is because I'm seeing it as a rework. Of my order, which was to establish a capitals stabilization fund. So to me, this is just a new way of approaching that old issue, because if we do not have. Any kind of funds set up to fund capital programs, we're gonna, it's gonna take us five years every time we wanna put a. Lit stop sign up, every time we wanna fix a sidewalk or anything else. Because we're not approaching it in a business-like fashion, so this is just the latest workaround. From my perspective, and um, I support it from the point of view of setting up a capital stabilization fund, thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Motion to have a great discussion in committee on the motion, Mr. President.
Alright, so on the motion to send a committee with a copy to mayor's office and treasurer. All those in favor. Twenty-nine is from Counsel Murphy. Order that the DPW come up on an action plan to collect litter all along both sides of Route Five from McDonald's to West Springfield Town Line. Along both sides of Lower Westfield Road, North Hampton Street to the bridge along Williams Farm Road from North Hampton Street, um. So refer to DPW Suez and a copy to DG and R.
And when I emphasize that, this is actually an order that Counsel Bartley brought to my attention and I co-signed with him, so he should be the lead. Uh, Counselor on this and I, I.
All for one, one for all, Terry, that's, that's how we do it here in the city council, everybody loves one another. Just sign my name on to it, Mr. President, if you would.
So adding Counsel Bartley and then sending to DG and R with a copy to DPW and Suez, all those in favor. Counselor Sullivan is number thirty.
Yeah, could we take thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two as a package?
The motion to suspend the rules, take up thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two as a package, all those in favor. All opposed, thirty is that according to Master Law Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-eight H, the city approve and ratify the agreement between. Grow Hoyoke uh, pilot. Thirty-one, similar, but this is the pilot for Jackson Canal LLC. And then thirty-two is the solar LLC pilot at seventy-five Appleton Street, these are all going to.
Finance and I just wanna point out, once again, these are, these ones are clear, these are pilots that have already been entered into. By the mayor and they require, th- th- these ones do require council approved, council ratification.
So thirty, thirty.
They've already, they've already been, they've already been done, so.
Okay, so thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two, all to finance. All those in favor. Thirty-three is from Counsel Bacon, that the. Alright, wait a minute, thirty-three, where thirty-three gods. Order that the department has over a hundred thousand of unreconciled grant funds resulting in a reduction of free cash to the city will be subject to any legal. Remedy to return the same amount of funds to the city within the next fiscal year.
Uh, finance, please.
To finance, all those in favor.
We, with the baker's approval, could you add Sullivan to that?
Sure.
Adding Counselor Sullivan to. Thirty-three. Thirty-four was. Yeah, Counsel Tallman, yep.
Yeah, and now last order, um, for Counsel Bacon, should there be a copy maybe sent to the lot department? Is that possible? Okay.
Yeah, so it's to finance with a copy to legal. Okay. So thirty-five is from Counsel Bartley and Counsel Murphy, DPW city engineer. Provide an update to potential sale of lots for housing at the top of Saint Vincent Street. Refer to DPW city engineer, copy to DG and R.
Well, it's all old.
All those in favor.
Uh, could we take thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, or file it to my name, abbreviate a reading, send to DGR, please?
Second, motion to suspend the rules, take up thirty-six to thirty as a package, all those in favor. All opposed, thirty-six, um. This is, uh, city council, um. Declare sixty Hamilton Street as surplus property, thirty-seven. Order at the council in accordance with the connect, create, uh, plan, um. Amend the December fifteenth approval of sixty Hamilton Street. Uh, to the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority for Adala, uh, so that one's the DG and R. And then the last one, thirty-eight, order that the council in accordance with the redevelopment authority plan renewal, connect, construct, create. A plan to real visualize Hoyoke, um, that fifty-five Hamilton Street. Um, I think that's for surplus as well, so all three of those to DG and R. All those in favor. All those opposed, thirty-nine. Is from Counsel Hernandez, that we invite in the chief of police to discuss a plan. That department has in place in case there is a domestic terrorism in our city. And if there are any changes to the current plan that were prompted since the attack on the Capitol Hill this past one, six, twenty, twenty-one. Public safety, with a copy to the chief of police. All those in favor.
Hi, thank you.
Forty is from Counsel Hernandez. Uh, order, I'd like to have this workshop being offered to youth mental health as part of the commu- uh, communication section. So Counselor, with regards to this, what are you looking to?
Counselor, well, I wasn't sure where to incorporate it, but this is a great, um. Training, it's called the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training. And it's available, um. The project director or the collaborator for educational services in North Hampton, they receive additional grant money. And um, I just thought that this is very beneficial for youth ages eight through eighteen. Um, to address any type of like, um, anxiety, depression, eating disorders, um, especially in. These times that children are learning remotely and have had to tolerate this whole year pandemic. I'm learning, I think it's um, just crucial that we. Can, can identify the signs, um, warning signs and intervene in any way, um, through referrals. To keep the, to keep the mental health of our children in this um, town, so. I have um, more information as to the contact person, just in case.
Let me, that I, it's a very good order, I'm just trying to figure out, eh, are we looking to get grant money? Or like, if we sign up for this, how?
It's free.
Okay, so.
It's just like.
We should send this over to the mayor. And if it's a program that the city wants to enter into, the mayor can sign us up for it. Uh, Counsel Bacon.
I was going to offer a motion to receive, so then it would then be printed in our minutes and made part of what's on the web. Um, if I understood what Counsel Hernandez was doing, I thought she wanted it to come to us as a communication. Under that section of our agenda is what I was thinking.
Yes, I know, and that's where I thought that it was gonna be, but.
Okay, so motion would be to take forty and receive, that's how we wanna do this? And a copy to the mayor. Alright, so hold on, I see hands up, so I'm gonna go Counsel LeBron Martinez first, Counsel Lisi, and then Counsel Tallman.
I, I suggestion that this may be also something that may want to be sent to, um. I, I suggestion that this may be also something that may want to be sent to, um, um, Dr. Vasquez as the superintendent, because I think it's a great, um, tool and opportunity to address that. Um, maybe I'll be talking to you, I may be interested as I have a, a, a big group of youth working right now that this can be introduced as well, so I just want to let you know, thank you.
Counsel Lacy?
Uh, thank you, I was going to say something similar, that, um, we should be, uh, receiving it and referring it both to the mayor and to the superintendent. Um, because I do think that, um, there's probably a number of people within the school system that would benefit from a training like this, and so it would at least be made available to them.
Alright, so, alright, so Counsel Tallman is your hand up, or is that for-
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I didn't take it down before, but I did want to make a, a statement that I think, uh, this is important that uh, it is sent over to the mayor and to also the, uh, superintendent, uh, for the, the students in the school system.
Okay, so I think we're all on the same page now, best thing to do is receive this, copy to the mayor and the superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, on to late files, there's a few left. Let me just get them in order here. Late file A. It's a communication from Eversource.
That's you.
You don't have your mask on, no kidding.
Uh, this is sent to the council, but forgot to put on the agenda, it, uh, this is letter informing Eversource, Westman is intended to selectively apply for uh, power line right of way through our Yermin's municipality, so I guess this would This has to be laid on, uh, laid on the table, kind of like the polls, or?
I think they're requesting a public hearing, like Verizon does.
Yeah, that's what I was looking.
Who is it from though?
It's Eversource.
So make a motion, send it in, or set up a public hearing.
Alright, motion to set up a public hearing, because they're looking to do line right-ofways passage through municipality, uh, conduct a component to-
Todd, if I could, I think they do this yearly, it has to do with the, uh, insect repellent?
Yeah.
Or cutting down, uh, branches and making sure that-
Right.
So make a motion, set up a public hearing for them?
Second.
And we're gonna take a final action because it's a late file, so-
I've never seen it, I've never seen a public hearing set up for that before, but.
But they have to go to a committee first though, before you send them to a commit- to a public hearing?
No.
There was a deadline on that too.
Let me see.
Says it's in compliance with, uh, I think a master of law, I read it correctly.
Yeah, so herbicides are gonna be, um, pesticides, I guess they're I don't see the deadline.
Maybe we should just send it, make a motion, send it to our ministry of assistant for him to call and, and ask what they want to do.
Yeah, that'd probably be best, so motion is to receive and then have Jeffrey follow up with them to get us some information?
Sounds good.
Counsel McGivern, your hands up, or?
Hey, I agree, yeah, it looks like more like it's an informational communication to us. Not sure if it requires a vote, but I think we should, uh, ask Jeffrey to, uh, involve the gas and electric and the DPW as to where this spraying would be and to, uh, then the board of health, to make sure if they are asking for a vote, that we get some good information from them.
Yeah.
Alright, so motion is to receive, I have, let Jeffrey follow up with them too, then get us our communication back as to what we need to do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? B is from let's see, to Counsel Murphy from Robert Parent, I think this was the information we're talking about for the potential school development pro- uh, property at the northeast corner of Saint Vincent Street in Ingleside.
Received, we all got a copy of it.
Got a copy, alright.
And I just want to thank Mister Parent for getting the information and, and I think there is some potential there, so.
Alright, so motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, C and D, this is the top paid report.
Make a motion to receive and-
Even send to finance?
Fine, second.
Oh, and it's got, so E is the elected official, so C, D and E are all the top paid and the elected, everything that was requested, so motion is to take up C, D and E as a package?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed, and then send to finance, that's what we wanted?
Yep.
Uh, and all three to finance, I'll, uh, Counsel McGivern first.
Uh, just the chair has a question to, I understand the, uh, report being received, is it just for the archives of finance, or are we looking for something else with the report?
Um, through the president?
Yeah.
To there, um, just so that we have it as information to inform us at budget time.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Alright, so all, all three of those to finance?
Have a question?
Oh, oh, sorry, who, who's, who? Oh, Counsel, alright, sorry, I was looking at the side with the blue hands, so Counsel Leahy and then Counsel Lacy, I saw both hands go up.
Yeah, so thank you, uh, on behalf of my, uh, former colleague and my former friend, Jack Wellenhinn, he used to every year ask, where is his four cents? City councils are supposed to get ta- paid ten thousand, that doesn't happen.
Never.
Jack Wellenhinn was always asking about this, where is that four cents go?
Flower fun.
No, it doesn't. That's not true.
One year it's minus four cents, the next year it's plus four cents.
Oh, there you go, Joe's got the answer.
That's not true either. It's always four cents, it's always four cents short.
Well, I must be getting the minus eight cents over two years.
We'll do an investigation.
I'm saying this on behalf of, uh, my friend, uh, former counselor Wellenhinn.
God rest his soul, yep.
Alright, so Counsel Lacy?
Uh, thank you, I'm just wondering, did we receive that, those, um, lists already, or is that being received now? Because I'm just not seeing them in my, uh, email here.
We got it from Jeffrey.
I received the two.
Couple days ago, a few days ago.
Inside, I didn't see the school one, do we have it now?
We, we don't have the school one yet.
No, at the school.
At the school, there was the top one hundred and then the elected officials, that's what I have in front of me.
Right, so we're waiting for the schools still.
Yes.
I'll go, I'll go through my, uh, email again, I might ask Jeffrey to send it back over, but if, if we already have them somewhere, um, I can get them easily enough from him, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, Mister President, uh, through, through you, uh, to Jimmy, Jimmy, uh, Jack was one of my first, uh, supervisors in postal service back in nineteen eighty-one, and actually, I got to sit in chair and sit on the council window for a few years, uh, before he passed, so he's quite a gen- quite a, quite an individual and I never realized, uh, about the four cents either, I never knew what happened to that. Uh, we'll, we're, we'll be finding out someday.
Someday, I doubt it, but.
I was young, that would have been a stamp.
Yeah. You're right.
So next, the next late file was F, and that's from Counsel McGivern, a hundred thousand dollars from stabilization to snow removal services.
Receive for the committee of finance?
Send to finance, all those in favor, unless there's a question? Uh, all those in favor, all those opposed?
Aye.
I is if I'm editing correct here, I is the last one, from Counsel Leahy, order that the city council, um, City of Hoyoke Park and Rec Department rebuild a concrete outdoor handball court. Hoyoke once had three courts and now are down to one wooden one.
Yeah, make a motion to receive and send to the Parks Rec Department and also, uh, uh, the mayor and also a copy to public, uh, I guess, safety or service.
Public service?
Sir, or maybe finance?
Finance?
Send to finance, because-
I could co-sign that.
Can I, can I co-sign on that?
Of course, absolutely, I'd never say no to anybody for co-signing.
Thank you.
I will forward you an email that I received from
We, we all got those emails.
Who has an organization, you got it, okay.
We all got them, yep. I, I filed this on their behalf.
I know William many.
Alright, so adding Counsel Murphy, Counsel Ver Martinez, Counsel Tallman? Counsel Tallman have a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted, wanted to be added on to that, I, I'm very familiar with the gentleman that sent that through and I'm glad Jim, uh, filed something, actually, uh, one of the, uh, persons on the, um, new, one of our new members on the Parks, uh, and Rec Commission is actually a handball player, so he knew the gentleman, the gentleman's originally from, from the flats in Hoyoke and, uh, is now part of that organization, so I, hopefully, we can get something done with that.
Counsel McGivern? Okay, Counsel McGivern?
I'm sorry, I think I froze up for a second, what's, what's the, uh, just the disorder?
This one is that the Hoyoke Park and Rec Department rebuilt a concrete outdoor handball court, once had three courts?
Thank you.
Okay, I see Counsel Bacon?
Oh, I'm all set.
Counsel Lacy?
Yeah, I would like to be added to that order, if you don't mind.
Oh, not at all, more the mayor.
We should all go sign up for it.
Unanimous.
Alright, Counsel Anderson Burgos?
Yep, I'm another handball, oh, there.
Alright, so with that, Counsel McGivern, your hands up again, or?
No, I'm still frozen.
Alright. Alright, so motion is to receive and refer to public service with a copy to the mayor and park and rec. Did I get that right, Counsel?
I think it was finance.
Finance, sorry, finance, sorry. So receive, refer to finance, copy to the mayor and park and rec. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That is all I have.
Uh, there should be a K that I sent along. Sorry about that.
No, uh, okay, do we have that, or?
It's in your email, Todd.
Oh, hold on, okay.
And my other device, um, is down, so I couldn't send it to everybody, I got it, I got it in there with the last bit of juice that I had.
Okay, late file K, that the mayor consider establishing a capitaliza- uh, capital stabilization fund potentially with a one-time expenditure for those presently healthy emergency stabilization funds. So it's
Receive and uh, receive, adopt and copy to finance, receive it up.
Yeah, just end rules to do that.
Yeah, so if we're gonna adopt something tonight, yeah, so send to finance, so receive, send to finance, copy to the mayor, do it that way?
Yep.
Yep. Counsel Lacy?
Haven't set, we haven't suspended the rules yet to take final action on any late files?
Just one, if you're gonna do another one, you have to suspend the rules for that one.
Um, yeah, so I'll motion to suspend the rules and, um, allow for final action on this order.
Second.
So motion is to suspend the rules, take up final action for late file K, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So
No.
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 Lot of discussion to be had on that.
Alright, so do you want to show our hands, final action, raise your hands? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, you need seven, so that would fail.
Send to finance?
So it, it's receive, send to finance, copy to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Nope, okay, with that, the motion would be to adjourn.
Motion is second. Undebatable, have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, be safe.
Bye.